Meeting is in order. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Ryan, will you lead us in pleasure?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the approval of the agenda. Move approval.
Second.
Okay, I would before we adopt it, if it's okay with the council, I'm not sure how the time is going to run. We have, the public comment is scheduled for a time certain at eight o'clock, and we also have a big topic, item number three on the highway, and we didn't want to interrupt the flow, so what I would like to do with the approval of the council is we'll go through the agenda for the early part, you know, the consent and that sort of thing. We'll, if we, depending on how the clock's running, we'll take some public comment. That's not on anything that's scheduled on the agenda. These are for people who have something they want to bring up that's not on the agenda, and we really appreciate it if you'd stay with that. And then we will take the staff report, and that should get us into the eight o'clock hour. If anybody shows up late that wants to comment publicly, then we will come back and have a second go around at that point, so.
I approve.
Okay, you approve? Okay, I think it was your idea. Okay, good.
Inter.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion or a second?
Yes.
Is any objection? If not, okay, the agenda is approved as presented. And now we have a presentation. It is my pleasure to make a presentation to somebody who has not only worked long and hard for literally decades, or at least 21 years, and did it all just for the privilege of being roundly criticized by both applicants and the community, a member of our planning commission, John Merk. Come on down, John. I've only known John for about three years. I'm going to go out and give this to you. I've only known John for about three years, but one thing that impresses me, he's sort of a, I won't say he's taciturn, but he's a, he has a quiet way about him, and he doesn't get excited unless it's really important to get excited about, which is rarely. And he's got a very even hand at providing justice, or at least fair hearing to the public, which is a wonderful thing. We have a plaque recognizing that, and I just realized that you were appointed to the planning commission on my birthday, not the day, not the day I was born, but there are some people who suspected maybe that, December 22nd of 1998, and John retired on January 1st, 2019. So I'm going to take the plaque out, but I would like to have the council recognize John in any way they'd like to with comments. Randy, you may...
Quick, John, first of all, your dedicated service, what's it, it's over 18 years. And I agree with the merit. You know, you're thoughtful, you're considerate, you do your homework, and you presented the city and the planning commission well. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, John, thank you. You've been a staple on the planning commission for a very long time, as long as I've pretty much known about the planning commission. So I really appreciate it. And I think you, I think, back a while ago, I think my dad and you worked on the planning commission together, if I'm correct. And I know he wanted me to share with you as well to thank you for all your years of service. So thank you, and we're going to miss you dearly.
I just want to echo that. Thank you so much for your service, and I've forgiven you for the few times we've disagreed.
I just want to say, your name is on so many documents that come up in the archives, that come up in our institutional memory. Things that we probably should, you know, we should not have forgotten, then we did. So I just want to thank you for that legacy of work that will live on. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, I don't know how long one has to be around to be known as a staple, but you're durable, durable good.
Yeah.
Historical.
Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Thank you. I just wanted to thank the council for appointing me so many times to be on. And I also wanted to thank my fellow commissioners over the years. It's, they're extraordinary people, and it's been a real pleasure to work with them all these years. And lastly, I'd really like to thank all the people that came to our planning commissions and got up here and stood at the microphone and talked about things, because it's a scary thing to do. And I really appreciated all the input from people over the years, and look forward to having more of it in the future. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
One of the things that doesn't have a lot to do with planning commission, but for those who are involved with the Arch Center, they know the contribution that John has made sets over there. You've done some really magnificent work for small theater, and in some cases, in the true Ojai spirit, they recycled your last one, as I recall, and used it in two different plays. It was, to me, that was, they were, the set was one of the stars, The Man from La Mancha.
Absolutely.
Okay, we are now on...
I'll move items on the consent calendar for approval.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? No objection. The consent calendar is approved. Item number two, under the public hearing, it's a recommendation to continue the regulatory fees. Mr. City Attorney, do we need to take any public comment on that, if we're going to just...
If anyone has submitted a card, you can offer them the opportunity, but if no one submitted a card, then that's that.
Do we have any cards for number two? No, we don't. Okay. So I am ready for a motion to continue the matter.
Continue.
Okay, got a motion, second?
A second.
Okay, moved in second. Is any, any discussion? If not, so ordered. Okay, now we get to item number three, for which, well, pardon me, we're going to do the public comment thing ahead of time so that we don't have to interrupt. I have some cards under general comment. I haven't received them yet, but as soon as I get them, I'll call your name. Okay, I have four cards, and Jamie Fleming, Chamber of Commerce.
Jamie Fleming, Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. Came quickly to make sure you were aware that the chamber's hosting the first Ojai Restaurant Week this week, and it's really been well attended, and we have 14 restaurants participating. You should take advantage of it. Everyone in the city should take advantage of it, because the restaurants are offering one meal at a fantastic price, just to try and lure you in to find out why the restaurant is really wonderful. So it's a great opportunity for all the locals to come in and find out a new restaurant instead of the usual one they always go to. So you can go onto our website, wininojai.com, or just go to the restaurant, because they will tell you what the special menu is also. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Pete LaFollette?
Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. Pete LaFollette. I live at Whispering Oaks. I'd like to give a heartfelt thanks to all of the city councils that recently appeared at the Board of Supervisors regarding the oil and gas project on Creek Road. And we all know that each time a decision like that is made, the spirit of Ojai has diminished just a little bit, and it's, I believe that all the local citizens here feel very strongly about the environmental quality of life here. And unfortunately, those decisions are made from people that are outside of our community and don't really have any business making sweeping decisions like that. But for all the citizens that follow it and are concerned as I am, if you will follow CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, and all other necessary environmental reviews, so projects like these don't get duplicated, and I'm sure hope that that's the last one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete. Teal Rowe. Teal, you out there? Okay, come on down, and Ray Powers on deck.
Mayor, councilpeople, and everybody else, welcome. Mr. Blatts.
Thank you.
I'm here to echo what Pete Lafayette just said. I thank the city so much for appealing that Bentley oil thing. It was so huge, and I think you all did such a great, great job out there. And I think that we all appreciate it and may not know it yet, but thank you so much.
Okay, Ray Powers.
Hello, council. I'm just here to make a couple announcements for some events coming up. This is the time to do that.
Some shameless commercialism?
Shameless commercialism.
Okay, go.
This Sunday.
This Sunday. I'm getting my notes.
Got a coach for it.
I do. My teleprompter, my Sousa prompter. This Sunday, January 27th, at Matilah Auditorium, the Green Coalition is hosting a panel discussion and presentations called Fire Safe and Earthquake Resilient Home Design. It'll be at Matilah Junior High Auditorium from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., like I said, this Sunday. And I'll be facilitating that, not as a planning commissioner, as a concerned citizen about our ability to be able to build non-toxic and natural building in the future that will protect our lives and protect our structures. The event will offer tips and guidelines for residents looking to build safely in an environment proven to be vulnerable to wildfire and earthquakes. Some of the topics we'll be covering are building methods and strategies such as reinforced adobe, straw bale, rammed earth, and other building materials. Some of the questions posed will be what codes are in place to help build safely, and what codes are holding us back. What are the obstacles we are here to face, and what can we do together to change policy on that? And also, are these approaches cost prohibitive or cost wise? And then there'll be a Q and A. It's an amazing panel of presenters we've put together. Art Ludwig from Oasis Design will be there to speak about reinforced, what he calls monolithic reinforced adobe, up at Quail Springs Permaculture Center next month with a grant with Cal Poly. They're doing seismic testing on adobe structures up there to give some data to the county, a building and safety department. Sasha Rabbin from Quail Springs will be there, speaking about Cobb Building and the history of earthen building throughout the world. Dastan Kalili from Cal Earth, some of you may know his father, Nadir Kalili, who invented super adobe, he'll be presenting. Jane Carroll, who's an architectural designer and helped design the straw bale buildings, and the council house with the living roof at the Ojai Foundation will be presenting. Those are the two structures that survived the Thomas fire. Matt Wyatt, who's the Ventura County Building and Safety District Manager Two, and also our mayor, Johnny Johnston, will be on the panel.
That's the amazing part. And with all those experts.
If I could have a little extra time, I know the red light went off. I was also asked to speak about February 2nd, so the following week. The Ojai Valley Green Coalition, Watershed Progressive, and Oasis Designs will be coming together to educate our community on climate resilient landscape design for your home and our unique watershed. It's going to be a jam-packed day of learning, both hands-on and lecture. It's February 2nd, 10 to 3:00. The event is free, thanks to the sponsors of the city of Ojai and Ventura River Water District. The focus of the day will be understand how your actions could help Ojai Valley water balance, what actions you can take, how to design your property for resiliency, like intro decide analysis, layers of geology, hydrology, habitat, history, culture, views, circulation, containment, and then onsite water storage and stormwater catchment and things like that. Those presenters are also, again, Art Ludwig is gracious enough to come out. He's also on the Fire Safe and Earthquake Resilient Panel, but he's also an expert in, and some of you may know his book on gray water, so he's going to be one of the presenters for that. Asia Bula Richards from Watershed Progressive, and Regina Hirsch from Watershed Progressive are also facilitating that.
And the time and location of that meeting on the 2nd?
February 2nd, 10 to 3:00 p.m. And I, it's the demonstration garden, but I also believe it's at Kent Hall as well.
Okay, great.
Ray, real quick, if you can't, for those of us who can't be there on Sunday, is that going to be videotaped in somewhere?
Yes, I am having it videotaped, and then that will be posted and archived.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ray. Okay, are there any other general comments? That's all the cards I have. So if not, we will get on to item number three, and that is the topic for which I believe a substantial number of members of the audience came for. So, Mr. City Manager, would you like to commence the process?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council. Briefly, before I turn it over to Greg Grant, our Public Works Director and City Engineer, obviously, the topic here is a discussion on the Active Transportation Project, also known as by its acronym of ATP. So the point here tonight is to receive a report on the project's scope and options, and to get some direction from council. I know there's a number of options out there that are not yet set in stone, and I know we have some members of the community that are very concerned and have some opinions on that. But again, to assure everybody, we're still at the point where we're mulling these over, and we'll be looking for council direction tonight. While certainly there's no real hard deadlines on us, because this is obviously a voluntary grant opportunity, the city could step out at any time if they wanted to. But obviously, if we want to be able to move forward with the grant and utilize that, we do have to be mindful of some of those deadlines coming up, and Mr. Grant will be able to give a little more details on that. So, but there is some more time here, but again, it is limited in terms of...
Growing short.
In terms of being able to move forward on this process with this grant. So with that, Mr. Grant, or, sorry, Mr. Mayor?
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor and council. And just clarification on that, too, the RFP is out. That's the Request for Proposals for the Design Consultant on this phase, and the next step would be for council to award that contract. So that's, there was a delay, and there's quite a few steps on every bit of this grant, because there's state and federal funding both, so it took a little while to get the state approval to release that RFP. And so that really will be back to council in approximately 45 to 60 days for approval. So there's a little room there. We'd like to direct the consultant, if possible. I think this lane reduction is the most outstanding issue. The other items that were listed in the report are relatively minor. These issues with trees and so on are not a difficult design issue. That entry at El Paseo and Ojai Avenue is a relatively minor thing as well. So if we can have the consultant go and try to get the permit from Caltrans within 14 months or so, we get them started in March, and they can get the permit by the following summer, 2020. And a reminder, after that, we would get our final construction allocation and start the work in the beginning of 2021. So obviously, the council has a lot of steps there that you could authorize or not, beginning right now with this design award in about 45 to 60 days. So based on that, I just want to run over a few things that, questions that, and concerns that council, and has been raised back in December, and by the community also. I guess this was covered somewhat back in a presentation in the large workshop we had in October, but why are we doing this in the first place? And there's a classic old picture the museum's been promoting. And this goes back to the late 60s, when Jim Lobel, the previous mayor, was pushing back against the highway. Caltrans was at that time proposing to continue Route 50 straight through Ojai to Santa Paula as a freeway, as well as Route 33, to bring that up and take it up to the Maricopa area. And the citizens that preserved the Ojai pushed back and stopped that effort. There were some history reviewed at that meeting. I won't get into that much here, but Ventura County's area plan, the land use planning for up in this valley, does dictate that the Highway 33 be limited to two lanes between Oakview and city of Ojai. So they recognized there's that four-lane stretch up there and did not push it past there. I think we've seen this statistic, but just as a reminder, it's a delicate thing with the speeds. When you're down in the 20 to 40 mile an hour range, the chances of survival of a hit change drastically. When you're down around 20, you can imagine your odds of surviving the hit are about 90% down at 20. They are roughly half at 30, and when you get up to a higher speed at 40, you've got a 90% chance of fatality being hit by a car. The, there's a lot of plans that city has gone through to support this kind of project. There's a bike and pedestrian master plan adopted back in 1999, which promotes and addresses all the issues outlined in this project. Pedestrian improvements, bike improvements downtown, bike lanes on Maricopa Highway, the walking and biking, walkability and bikability of the downtown area, and these are all things the ATP project is proposing. The Complete Streets Committee was formed by council in 2002, and has been meeting monthly under, is a subcommittee to the planning commission, discussing all kinds of these complete streets issues. The complete streets policy was adopted by council in 2012, which outlines a lot of these issues. And then, a year and a half ago, approximately, September 2017, the council adopted a complete street master plan. And it had three full days of outreach, one day for traffic calming, one day for pedestrian improvements, and one day for bike improvements. And it was well-attended, with a wrap-up session at the end. And that outreach effort is what folded into the complete street master plan, which was reviewed and recommended for adoption by the planning commission, and it had in all these same concepts we're talking about today. I should mention for, I think the more controversial issue here seems to be the lane reduction, and it outlined that in the master plan, as well as an option, where all four lanes would be maintained with a bike lane on the side and the existing parking lane. Another effort that was underwent in 2016 was the neighborhood planning effort, had a significant outreach, and that was dominated by complete streets topics at that time, in that Saturday meeting over at the Boyd Center. There was two consultants, renowned consultants, the Sargent Town Planning, as well as Nelson Nygaard, that were involved in that neighborhood planning effort, as well as the complete street master plan that was primarily Nelson Nygaard. Same thing with general plan, our general plan and its circulation element have got all kinds of parameters within it about pedestrian enhancement zones downtown, maximizing the freedom and the safety of movement for pedestrians, bikes, and automobiles, objectives to decrease dependence on, you know, single occupancy automobiles, the way they put it, and provide a high level of pedestrian bike and public transit. So these are all background documents that support the project. They've been going on for decades here at the city. Some of the features within there talk about creating safe environment for pedestrians and bikes with prominent pedestrian street crossings and narrowed street sections. With the purpose of the document as well, this is the circulation element of the general plan, providing safe travel for pedestrians, bikes, and motorists. So this kind of theme is repeated throughout documents the city has as general plan guidance documents. There's other features here. These are objectives within the document. For instance, number one, talking about, again, safe pedestrian bikes, avoiding gaps in the city's trail system. So this project proposes to close some of those gaps, provide bike trails, and close the gaps in the sidewalk system as well along this entire route. And also, you can see there's certain elements of that, which talks about neck downs to narrow the street crossings, to key pedestrian crossing locations, and provide a dedicated pedestrian walk phase, which we're approaching with these RFBs, otherwise known as rectangular rapid flashing beacons, like we have at Whispering Oaks. And it goes on to talk more about these same concepts throughout the entire document, with an emphasis, I should mention, about reaching the Americans with Disabilities Act goals, and that, wanted to highlight that as well. This whole project, of course, would be designed to the ADA standards. Any kind of curb ramps and sidewalks and so on would be to ADA standards. There is an emphasis in that document as well about street trees to be provided, and that they be provided for shade for pedestrians, parked cars, and pavement, reducing the heat island effect, and acting as a buffer between pedestrians and cars, reducing the width of the street space, thus helping enclose the outdoor room of the street, and creating a sense of place, and to reduce the speed of the vehicles, as well as absorbing rainwater and other benefits. More of the same, just highlighting a whole lot of objectives laid out within the document that promote this, as well as collaboration with schools, which has been significant in this, well, in this grant project as well. The access to Maricopa Junior High School, as well as Nordoff High School, is a significant feature of this project. So the complete streets master plan and had, and this was highlighted back in the October workshop as well, that highlighted that residents of Ojai have communicated a desire for balanced streets that allow driving to be complemented by safe options for walking, biking, and transit. And I think more of the same, we know these complete streets, master plans and policies, and the circulation element have all kinds of features promoting precisely what this project does. And some people get back to asking, what is a complete street? And this is a reminder here that it's a street that is planned, designed, and operated and maintained with consideration of the needs of all travelers, which would include bicyclists, pedestrians, cars, and mass transit users, as well as anybody with disabilities. And then, as a reminder, too, that council, some people were implying this was a new item that came up to the council, and this is a reminder that this has been going on for years, that back in 2015, the council authorized the grant application, and in May 15, 2015, reauthorized it with a resolution, and then we hired a grant management consultant, later a traffic engineering consultant, and then we reviewed the ATP project and authorized an outreach effort in late, in December 2016. And then there was discussion about the ATP as well during the complete street master plan, that it was acting in parallel, meeting many of the goals of the master plan. And then, in July of 18, there was further update with, of course, the recent October workshop, very well-attended, over 100 people. And in December, we had another meeting that we're just addressing most of the concerns brought up at that time. And then there was some concern about if there was outreach meetings, and I was recapping the meetings, and it took two pages, but there's various meetings outlined here with Lions Club, police, fire, the Ojai Village Merchants, the Chamber of Commerce, the business is in town, and these meetings were held at various times to try to be the most effective outreach possible. We had them after, on weekdays, late weekdays, and also Saturday mornings, trying to reach out as best possible. We met with the bike advocates several times, and the Green Coalition, the Ojai Unified School District, the Nordoff Parent Associations, the OUSD Board that provided the resolution of support, the police chief, and the fire chief twice, and Rotary's, California Highway Patrol. We had outreach meetings to utility companies, OVSD and Casitas Municipal Water District, HBC outreach regarding the downtown area, general meetings, and we, more recently, and I should mention the hospitals, as well as the lifeline ambulance, and we even did a special meeting with the company that operates the MRI tractor trailer, Oron, out of the hospital twice a week, and had them test... hospital twice a week, and had them test drive the proposed route. The Ojai Valley News has had this a couple times on a cover page with numerous editorials and advertisements for the outreach meetings we held. So as a reminder of the project, this is the master sheet that tells what the project's all about. I guess it's a little hard to see at that scale, but each one of those red rectangles is a detailed strip map available on the city's website, which shows in detail where the curb extensions are, what the striping plan layout is for the project. You can see, well, you can barely see, I guess, at this scale, that there's four pedestrian crosswalks on Maricopa Highway with proposed pedestrian improvements, and there's 13 on Ojai Avenue. The, I think some of the questions that are being raised here is, after the grant has cycled for this many years, and we have this much money, it's $2.8 million allocated with approximately $300,000 for design, how far is that 2.5 going to get now compared to what we originally proposed? And it is true that there is inflation occurring, and some of these costs were roughly estimated at the beginning. So every phase is outlined in the administrative report. We'll have design review at 35, 65, 85%. At each phase, we'll have detailed cost estimates, and we will shave as necessary the parts of the project which are not necessary as part of the grant. So that was the intention of these slides, is to outline what is required and what's not. So you can see the dashed yellow at El Roblar is second priority, that's starting in the upper left. If you go to the right, the crossing at Church is green, solid green, that's a high priority. That's one that's essentially required as part of the project. When you go further in at Pyri, that's required crossing improvement, as well as Valerio, Correo. So these are all a look, and you can see there was some additional work proposed at Val, I'm sorry, Correo, and that's why it's dashed yellow, that's a secondary priority. So those are the kind of things we'd shave out if our funding fell short during the design phase cost estimates. So you can also see, now we're into the downtown area, Kenyatta, that crossing is a priority. The one just to the left of it, the modified entry into El Paseo is a secondary priority, as well as the median in front of, from Kenyatta halfway down the block towards Jim and Rob's. Crossing, the existing crossings are essentially all priority to improve those and provide high visibility, safer crossings. But the secondary crossings, for instance, there at Blanch, you can see the one on the east side is a priority, but the one on the west side is secondary priority. The same thing goes for the next street over at Ventura. And I guess when you get down to the center of the arcade, that's a green, so that's required. East end of the arcade is required as well, and the one in front of the Jim and Mike's in the school district there is a required improvement as well. Going further out of town, these are, they were all, all required per the grant, all the way out to Bryant Street. The farthest one out is at Allison Lane, that one is secondary, not required.
Those are all just, what, crosswalks?
Crosswalk improvements, right.
Greg, what do you mean by required and not required?
The grant, sorry. The grant application included improvements at the pedestrian crosswalks to show that we would have a presumed or modeled increase in pedestrian activity and safety at those crosswalks. So the grant was awarded assuming these improvements would occur.
Greg, if we don't have enough money to do all the green improvements, do we, do we have to do those, or if there's not enough money to do even the priority one ones, would that be, what would happen then?
That would be a point where the ATP Grant Committee would be more understanding if we're actually at a point where we can't fit the bare minimum in.
What do you mean by more understanding?
Well, if we are, I think that our base estimates, even on recent estimates, are in that ballpark, that we're going to make that. And, but if we came through and we were doing a fairly essential pedestrian crossing improvement, nothing too luxurious, and we are still short, we would take a look at crossings that were low use, low priority, and I think the ATP Committee would be understanding to reduce those to meet the grant available funding.
Okay, and then, if, if, you know, we don't have to address this now, but in my mind, it's very clear that all of these crosswalks are needed, and ideally, they would not only be pedestrian crosswalks, but several of them would have bike crosswalks, because I've been looking at pictures, and it's not that hard to do. It's basically a regular crosswalk with a bike crosswalk right next to it, just a drawing of it. So I, you know, ideally, we, because it's a health and safety issue, we would find the funding for that, because I'm constantly zigzagging, adding five minutes to what could, what's really a two-minute commute, just to get across Ojai Avenue. You know, so, so just for the public, I think we want to get this, we want to move this forward, but we're not going to lose sight, you know, we're going to settle, but then we're going to look at it and fine-tune it over the years until we get it right. That's how I'm thinking.
Keeping in mind that the fine-tuning has to occur pretty quick.
Yeah.
Because, fine-tuning.
Maybe paying for that fine-tuning.
No, I understand, but I don't want people to be disappointed if we can't do everything tonight, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So Mayor, I just have another question, Greg. We'll have more, but as you're going, they come up. You say priority, so who set the priority?
The priority is set by the grant application.
So you, so explain that process just a little bit if you can. You write, you wrote the grant, am I correct?
I, I proposed a concept to council and requested their authorization to apply for the grant, and I follow those guidelines.
Okay, so in that grant, didn't you set the priority? That we felt that, you know, we needed to address all of the street crossings and the downtown corridor, and we looked at the 33 is that three-quarters of a mile strip, and we felt that was a priority. That's what I'm trying to ask you. You technically set the priority. They approved the priorities, correct?
I say me, because I, that's what I was trying to outline, that our circulation element and the master plan and the bike plan all have all these elements laid out. So that's where I got the guidance from.
Okay, I'm, I'm not questioning that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm asking, did you set the priority in how you, when you wrote for this grant funding? That's all I'm asking. You had to, someone had to have.
Right, I just, I just looked at the documents and put them on the grant and applied for it.
It's easy to say yes or no.
Here, let me try to answer for you, Randy. I think what they mean by a priority element is that that got us credit when we applied for the grant, and we said, these are the things that we want to do for safety. And so I'm, my assumption was, when I read this, that the people who granted the money and who gave, gave us a priority when they awarded the grant, they were saying, you have a really safety, pedestrian safety element to this, which we'd like to see taken care of. If we don't do those things, and we decide to do it all for, say, trees, nothing wrong with trees, but if we decided that's, we were going to landscape with the money, that would then be in default of what we said. So it's going to be, at some point, we have to say, what's going to be in, and then decide if we're going forward.
Right, so, that's what I'm trying to say, is I agree with everything that's in there. You know, and I think those are necessities that this community needs, and actually, this community wants. So I'm 100% behind it. I'm just kind, when I hear the word priority, someone had to tell them what we wanted to do, and then they in turn looked at it and says, we agree with what you're trying to do based on meeting the requirements of this grant. That's what you just said, am I correct? So technically, you're the one who said, these are the areas that we would like to see improvement, and we would like to see those improvements done with these funds. And they in turn said, good job.
I think so.
Okay, that's, I.
Based on all those documents that you just showed us.
Right.
Right.
But I, I guess, again, I'm just trying to get back to the fact that you're our city engineer, and that, that is one of your responsibilities, is to actually do that, provide that service. And I just wanted to clarify that, when someone says priorities, who set the priority? Was it council? Was it you? Was it community? And it's you, and I, and so I'm in favor of that, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to move into, I think the report lays out the major concerns that council raised in December's council meeting, and the issues, I think, are no secret that we, there's some questions about schedule that we just touched upon a bit more. There was some grant scoping that we just got into. There was a question about lane reduction, which seems to be the more concerning element. And then there were some more recent emails that were brought up about the functionality of Maricopa Highway during emergencies. I just wanted to highlight in the report that we have asked our traffic consultant to do the initial study to provide a supplement of analysis of what impacts could occur during any kind of emergency. It's already been discussed with fire, police, and various consultants, so we don't have any major concerns at this time, but we want a subjective review done that will be provided by a consultant, and it'll be done over the next month, and be ready in March.
Is the scope of that for just the Maricopa Highway part, or is it for the entire project?
Well, it's for Maricopa Highway.
Okay.
The concern was about the lane reduction.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's hard to envision.
There's no other lane reduction, right? But it's not a traffic site, it's just about the lane reduction.
It's supplemental, and also some of that.
And that report's coming back to us in March?
Yes.
First or second meeting?
Uh, you know, the report was going to be done and go to Caltrans, and we could either present it to council or provide it to council, however, however the council or city manager would like, prefer.
By second meeting in March?
Uh, yeah, it should be ready by second of March. So the lane, let's see, I'm trying to think of the various topics that came up as well. There's a modified entry at El Paseo, and that's, there's some discussion by council about whether or not that should be closed off versus the bull-nosed curb extension proposed. It's not a major element as well, and it's even secondary if there's some issue. There was some question about the trees in downtown arcade, as well as in the median just east of Kenyatta. These are very minor items, and they're up for discussion by council tonight. We appreciate that input, but they are not a key part of the design effort, so it's not critical, the answer on that. So really, I think this boils down to the lane reduction, so I want to touch on that again, and remind people the purpose of these lane reductions, lane reductions is safety, primarily, absolutely, is the safety for pedestrians. Walking across a four-lane highway is a difficult thing. It's, people don't tend to do it, it's not safe. If you go over there and watch the high school in the morning, you'll barely see 10 people crossing that road to get over to the school in the morning. It's safer for bikes as well. That faster roadway is dangerous to bike as well, bike along as well, and for cars. There's a little more information about that. The FHWA talks about these lane reductions. The old trend was 1950s and 60s, was to keep expanding roads bigger and bigger, and that as far back as 1979 is the first known lane reduction in Billings, Montana, and they say it was a successful reduction of four lanes. That's when they had two lanes each direction, no median, and they called it a three lane, which is one each direction with a median for a turn lane, much like we have in the downtown area. And then they go on to describe that essentially, after decades of these lane reductions, a trend back to quieting and calming streets. The last line there says FHWA has deemed road diets and other roadway configurations a proven safety countermeasure, and promoted it as a safety-focused alternative cross-section. The primary benefits, again, is overall crash reduction. This is from the FHWA summary of road diets. Fewer lanes for pedestrians to cross, with an opportunity to put a pedestrian refuge island in the center median as well. People know what that is, that's essentially what we have over Maricopa. If you've got a median and you've got somewhere, you can actually have a refuge and stop and take a break if traffic somehow wasn't stopping for you. The opportunity to install bike lanes, the reduced right angle crashes at side streets, that essentially is talking about when you come off a side street, you don't need to worry about four lanes of traffic you're dealing with, you've only got two lanes, and you have reduced accidents. The traffic calming is significant, that one car will set the speed, it's not somewhat of a passing lane, that left lane. And then it's, encourages a community-focused complete streets environment, and it simplifies road scanning and gap selection for motorists making left turns. So in other words, when you're looking and seeing how much traffic you have to deal with, instead of four lanes of traffic, you got two, much simpler to make a call on whether or not you can get into that street. This is a stat, there's a lot of stats, and they all line up in this area, that cities across the United States that do quite a bit of these lane reductions tend to put triggers at annual daily traffic in these volumes, 15,000 to 25,000 would be the maximum daily volume to do a road diet. So we're down at about 10,000, significantly below any triggers that cities have set across the country. This is a reminder of the basic two concepts that.
Greg, can you interrupt me? Can you explain that a little better? Are we below the standard or above the standard?
Yeah, we are well below it.
Well below it.
Yeah. If, if we were getting higher volumes like downtown, and we're, downtown is in the ballpark of 25,000, that would be a level where a lane reduction, so we're, we're obviously pretty good, pretty high capacity of a one-lane road right now, and they're saying, two lanes, they would be easily doing it in Seattle, a more progressive city, but some other cities would not at that point.
So you're, in other words, you're saying that because of the low capacity on Maricopa Highway, we're a good candidate for a lane reduction, that's what you're saying?
You're saying low volume, aren't you?
Low volume, yeah, yeah.
So as a reminder, this ran.
Greg, one quick question, just for, just because it popped up, is, so if we, so if we're four lanes with 10,000, and we reduce it to two lanes, we're going to assume that we're going to maintain the same 10,000 activity level?
Yes.
Okay, so there's not going to be an increase due to a reduction in lanes? There might be, there might be an increase in traffic, not just in vehicles, but in pedestrian and bike. Are those part of that study?
The, when they talk about ADT, those volumes, we're talking about car volumes.
Okay, thanks.
So this is a reminder of, is nice rendering, hopefully simplifies the concept of what is proposed on Maricopa Highway for the lane reduction. So from the high school to El Roblar, this is proposed, that center median stays the same, the left-hand travel lane stays the same, the right-hand travel lane converts to a parking lane with trees or other options in it. Right now, it's proposed with trees, and we've never been able to get a definite from Caltrans of whether that's acceptable. There are specifications, say it's acceptable for speed limits at 35 or less, which is what we have in Maricopa. So it's possible, but we have not got a definite. So that would separate what they call a class four, or a fully separated bike lane, would be hugging the curb, which is what's considered to be the safest type of bike lane besides a class one bike trail, for instance, that we have, the Ojai Valley Bike Trail. Now here's what's proposed from Church at the high school all the way to the Y. This is called a buffered bike lane, so you've got the car hugging the median, and you've got a buffer with a bike lane next to it. And then you've got that existing park lane, which is already out there, with trees proposed in it as well. So that's really from Church all the way to the Y, and the previous one is from Church back to Maricopa. Now the advantage, the original design here is that when cars pull out of a driveway, you can imagine it's a little bit tricky when they have to cross that bike lane, drive into the park lane, and then pull out into the travel lane. So that's, there are no driveway cuts between Church and El Roblar, and that's why when you go from Church to the Y, this is proposed, a little bit simpler, you pull out in, as we often do, you pull out into the park lane, you're looking for bikes and cars in the same area.
Greg, where, where on, on that part from the high school to the Y, where would it stop at the Y? Would it go all the way to the, the turn on, or, I mean, would it stop somewhere short of the turn in at Bonds where that is, or?
Right, as you're approaching the Y, all three lanes, for three lane options, you can go right, left, and the center lane is both, so that stays. The lane coming back at Miners Oaks, right now there's two, it reduces to one to make room for the bike.
So where would the last tree be, where you're talking about? That would be going southbound from Miners Oaks towards the Y. I'm looking at the right, there's trees along the right from, you know, there's the school to El Roblar zone, then there's the church or school to the Y. to El Roblar zone, then there's the church or school to the Y. On that part, where's the last tree I'm going to see on the right along the Y, before I get to that, the Y, or does it go all the way down to?
They're proposed out in front of the Ben Franklin area.
Okay, because it wouldn't be all the way down, right? Because where the, like, the Ojai shrub is and the big tree out front, it's not down that far?
Right, okay. Yeah, it'd only be there. And there'll be issues with Caltrans, they're very strict on their line-of-sight issues, so even when you come out to Correa or Valerio, you won't be able to obstruct that line-of-sight very well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question that maybe other people have too. All of these options provide for emergency situations, is that correct? You know, in the sense...
I'm not sure what can you mean.
Okay, so that if there is, you know, the foremost question a lot of people concern is if there's a fire, we can still, we can, how does it work? We can use, the bike lane can become a vehicle travel lane, is that...
That's right.
Is that...
Absolutely. I mean, looking at that now, if you go from the Y to El Roblar, there's barely anybody who parks on the side of the road now. And there's a little bit at the Ojai Meadows, and then a little bit during football games sometimes. And a little bit being a dozen, there's plenty of room in the parking lots. So, these approach, you would have the car lane 12 feet, and you have the bike lane with a buffer about 10, so you've got like 22 foot before the parking lane even starts. You essentially have two lanes there. Anybody should be able to park or pull off to the side into that bike lane and leave plenty of room for a vehicle to get by. Keeping in mind, from the Y all the way down to Pyri, there's no median, so there's plenty of median to drive through as well.
Yeah.
So, I guess your, the trickier spot would probably be when you talk from church back to El Roblar, now you're saying, well, these, even in this case now, the cars would be able to pull off to the side, if you had heavy traffic, they'd pull into those parking areas, and they, and that would allow the emergency vehicles to get by, or they obviously drive forward and get out of their way. Keeping in mind, we reviewed that with police and fire, that if there was some kind of a, I don't know, an obstacle that blocked it, they've always got the options of oncoming lane or going up church and down Cuyama.
Yeah, I think that's the important point, is that the public understands this is all going to be, and it has been reviewed by police and fire, you know, all the, and you've spoken with the hospital, all of that. Okay, thank you.
And CHP, yes.
So, Mayor, I have one more question, too. Greg, you're saying that that's recommended, but there's seven proposals in here, am I correct? We're going to be looking at all seven and directing you...
Right.
...to include that in your bid documents, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Seven of, you show six on here, but there's actually seven.
Right, okay. So, this is, I want to point out, I think, some of this concern back to this lane reduction. If you look at church and Pyri, right, these are the, the whole high school is shown here with these circled areas. The biggest concern is 15 to 20 minutes in the morning when school starts, when it gets out, people try to come northbound on 33, and they get stuck in that left turn lane because people coming from Miners Oaks side are stuck turning into the driveway, and they're backed up against the driveway, right? So, that circle, let me try this neat gadget, see if I can do this. Oh, yeah. That circle right there is a new driveway cut, so people would come from Miners Oaks and feed into that parking lot, and this is a key way to fix that issue we have at that intersection up there.
So, Greg, I want to, I want to make this clear and highlight this, because this is a question I've talked to a lot of people in the public that they didn't know about. And, and I'm going to, I'm going to make a statement, and you tell me, this is where we're consistent with what we're thinking, that what, there's, there's not a volume problem on Maricopa Highway. What there is, is there's a specific problem with Nordoff turning in, where that current turn-in is, and people trying to turn in right in from, from Maricopa Highway, as well as left from the other side. And part of this project is going to have a cutout in front of Nordoff, where there's a pickup and drop-off area, as well as Nordoff. I don't think, are we paying for that cutout, by the way, at Nordoff, or is that a Nordoff project?
Yes, I think we're paying, let's say volunteer.
So, we're going to be put, we're going to help them put that in. That overall, at the end of the day, even with one less lane, it's actually by redesigning it going to improve traffic flow substantially with the Nordoff problem, not be an increased problem, but actually a decreased problem even with one less lane. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
It really is all about 15, 20 minutes in the morning, you'll see that left-hand turn lane stack, and occasionally, and we've measured this for weeks at a time, occasionally kick out into that one lane. So, if you had one lane there, that could be an issue, but not with this extra driveway cut.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's very interesting, because if you go there now, even with four lanes, it hasn't solved any traffic issues at all. This morning, I was there for almost two hours, and at one point, there were up to 15 cars backed up in the left turn lane. It was so scary out there that I only saw three students cross the church road way, you know, and the other lane is being used as a drop-off, and it was beyond absurd. It's like a total illustration of old outdated thinking. What you have is a total car-dominated infrastructure, and it's no coincidence that, it's no coincidence what's happening there. That, that infrastructure was designed for what's occurring, and by changing the infrastructure, we're going to make it safe for people of all ages to reduce their car use.
At this point, let's try to keep it just questions for clarity, and then we'll have a chance when we take it in deliberation.
Yeah.
Oh, good, hang around, you'll be here a while.
I'm doing a little close-up here to point out as well, because I think the concern also, you can see the two different types of curb extensions provided here, right? As you're heading from the Y on the right to the left to Miners Oaks. At church, it converts to that class four, which is a separated bike lane. So, that is, it's one concept to do in a curb extension, which the team came up with. So, we had a team of three traffic engineers, three firms, trying to give their best opinions on this, is what they agreed to. So, the, so there you've got, let me try my pointer again, that you've got, I'm talking about this one. So, with that, what I'm pointing right there is a 12-foot lane, which would be the primary driver lane, this separation which starts that parking lane and makes it clear, and then we've got an 11- to 12-foot bike lane. So, you can see, this is a pinch point, and if it was a problem on that primary lane, or if it was being used by a utility company or otherwise, this could become a travel lane. That could be a detour lane, or used by emergency vehicles, or a lot of options, you've got two lanes there. The other option is go up church. So, if you go up church and down Cuyama, it takes about 30 seconds extra to get to the El Roblar.
Okay, you're saying that that, the bike lane is wide enough to accommodate a fire truck?
Proposed 11 to 12 feet at this point.
Okay.
Yeah. That still leaves an eight-foot parking lane between the two. And, all right, so going over here, I think it's a similar question with this curb extension here and the median here, the distance, Caltrans will only let these curb extensions come off the existing curb by six feet, so they won't let them come to the full width of the parking lane, which is common in areas, some areas they even go past. So, right now, it's 32 foot between the median and curb, you subtract your six, and you've got 26, right? So, you've got 26 feet is the remaining space, and that's what's kind of poorly written up there, but 26 foot for the total distance. So, that's where you've still got a lot of room, and I think people are addressing that as well, at these pinch points. If somebody pulled over, if there was an accident or whatever, is there enough room to get by? There's, there can always be an issue that you can come up with, with some kind of a major accident, of course, it would clog any lane or any highway, but there's still a lot of room left here, I'm trying to highlight that. And it's very similar here, when you look at these, it's, it tends to be this 26-foot situation, right? We've got the median over to a curb extension, 26 feet, or sometimes there's a turn lane, and that adds 12 feet, so you've got the 26 plus 12, 38 feet. So, that's just more of the same. When you get down to Valerio and Correa, it's the same thing, except the curbed median starts here, there's just all painted median at this point, so it's easy enough to drive And that was the situation that Councilman Blatts was asking about, right? That you've got, as you approach this area, you come up, there is a curb extension for safety in this crosswalk, but it opens up immediately afterwards for the entrance to Vons, and you, just as it does now, it opens up three lanes in this area. This area, whereas two lanes coming in, would just be one lane, that is a change with a bike lane next to it. But keep in mind, there's only one lane feeding at any time, one lane from northbound 33, or one lane from downtown. So, I think at this point, it was the, as Councilman Haney said, whether it was six or seven, I'm not sure, but there's these options, and essentially, these options go in decreasing levels of safety. So, you've got what's proposed right now, that bike, the travel lane for 12-foot, you've got a car lane, and you've got, right now, with 11, 12, you could have a two-way bike lane at any areas we wanted to. It was being highlighted by some people, there can be issues with that as you get into driveway areas, it's confusing, to somebody exiting a driveway, whether you, if you had somebody coming across against the regular flow of traffic. But from, from El Roblar to the school, it would make sense for sure on the south side, and I know it was pushed as well on the, from the high school over to Valerio area.
I just have one question. I didn't see in the staff report about the different styles, like six or seven, how they interact with the cost aspect of it, and whether or not, if we go to, if we go to the most, if we go to the safest type, is that going to inhibit some of the other low priority things we want to do because it's more expensive? And how much?
You know, putting trees in, if we go with more mature trees, it does cost money, and we talk about significant root barriers to assure they don't impact the pavement and so on. So, bigger trees would cost more money, obviously, than the lowest options, just putting paint out there. So, it's possible, when we, I think we hit that 35% design, that we would re-approach council at that point and say, hey, we are tight or not. So, if the council agreed, for instance, to go with a more conservative approach here and went with the trees, I guess we'd even have to accost us, because one of these upcoming options have large planters out there with trees in them.
Yeah, I guess, I guess at some point, we have to figure out, I mean, it's, the safest design and the prettiest design kind of seem like it's the number of this design, but if that means we're going to miss five other lower priority intersections because we can't afford it, because we went with this more expensive option, we got to know what that benefit, what that balance is so we can make a good decision.
At this point, it appears we can make it.
Okay.
With everything being proposed, primary and secondary objectives.
Okay, thank you.
So, all right, going back to this one anyways, we had the drive lane, we've got the park lane, we've got the two-way. So, this is the proposed section from church to El Roblar, and then you go to, this is a very similar section, except we're pulling the trees and proposing that plants be providing that area. Ojai Valley Sand District had concerns with the trees from Pyri to El Roblar on the northbound side, because they have a sewer line off under the travel lane. So, we've, at this point, said we would not put the trees in, we would do some other type of landscaping to assure that northbound lane didn't have it. So, here's another option, just showing the same thing, except planters. So, you've got large municipal planters, it could be spaced at various levels, and you, of course, would get into a situation then, depending what kind of plants used in there, that you'd have to, it may require watering. Now, next step down would be to stripe areas between the park areas and put some kind of a bollard. I'll have some photographs here in a second that show those options. Here's the next option, skip the bollards and just do paint. So, this is the same geometry as the other one, the travel lane and then a park lane with cars here, but some striping in between where the cars would park, and then the two-lane traffic, two-way traffic lane for bikes.
What would the purpose of the striping be, or the utility of the striping, rather than...
Yeah, we would have to clarify, it'd be an edge line to the cars, that fog line, but you'd want to clarify that's not a kind of a travel lane. You just want to make sure cars understand, I drive in this one, not in that one. So, here is the...
These are universal, I don't, these are universal symbols, the stripe, I mean, it's universal, so cars will understand it, right? We're using the same as what you see in other cities, yeah.
And I would hope any concern would be alleviated between a high-level design firm, as well as Caltrans, that are very conservative and have a lot of legal situations they've been to, so they go with conservative design. And so, this is an option for the whole highway. So, we've got the travel lane shown, a buffer, and then the bike lane, and then the cars against the curb. So, this could be the entire roadway from the Y to El Roblar. Right now, is proposed from church back to the Y. So, this is what you call a buffered bike lane. And there's enough room to make that two-way as well, but we would be careful where those are done. Again, it's tricky to do that where there's driveways.
And what are we looking at at the stripe? Is that just paint, or is that...
It's all paint. So, this one has paint, and there are shown some, it's common to use paint and add bollards in there. Some cities even do bollards with curb stops in them, and there's different ways you can handle that. And I'll, I'll show you the photographs in a minute, help clarify that. And I think last we had four lanes, as we have right now, take that last eight feet, put a buffer with bikes on that area on the side. So, we have 32 foot, you could go to 11-foot lanes and have 10-foot lefts, you could go two- or three-foot buffer with a seven-foot bike lane. So, that's the minimalist protection, but it still works. So, here's some photographs that might make a little more sense. I think this came up before, is how do you put trees between parking? And this is one we just found readily, that we had some young trees there, but it does bring in the whole aesthetic in the window of trees around you. I always think of shady lane versus some of the streets where it's pulled way back, and it's real pretty when, aesthetically, when the trees are tight. So, here's one also that shows that lane, so you've got the bikes over here, you've got the cars, this one has two, but it'd be the same concept, you have trees, and we'd have parking amongst those trees, so that gives a feel for it.
Greg, is that, is that what, that last one, is that what's proposed from the area in front of the Y to church?
That's proposed from the high school to El Roblar. Okay, so here's with planters. You could have a curbed in-the-ground landscaping, or you could have planters above ground.
What?
And here, all right, so that was in-ground planting, and this is above-ground planters, nicely separated. You can tell that physical barrier feels good and safe, it's the kind of thing you tend to take your family out more likely on. Now, you've got one that strictly goes with raised concrete curb with a cemented-end median strip, and maybe not as attractive, and physically, you're not feeling quite as nice there. Here, you've got a painted buffer, this is what I was talking about, you could do paint and do all kinds of options with bollards. These are flexible, plastic, white, you can do them green. So, there's another example of it. There's another. This is what I'm talking about, this is Modesto, actually, where they've got, they do curb stops between them. So, it's a physical barrier, and people who drive in a car recognize physical barriers, they'd be, they, they slow down, they're careful. And this green style is growing in popularity, and you'll tend to see green markers or some kind of green paint to flag to people what, in that base as well as the paint. And then here is, this is essentially what we're talking about, the minimalist approach would be if we just took and left four lanes, took the last 10 feet, put a three-foot buffer, that's roughly what it is. People tend to use diagonal striping in it now, but it doesn't have to be, and then you put the bike lane close to the curb. So, there's a separation, but nothing physical, not quite as safe. There's some diagonal striping that goes back to, that's a Modesto design, and here are these...
Can you go back to the, that worst one?
This one?
No, no, the one, that one.
Okay.
Oh, and now, that, that wouldn't even work because we don't have that room for the sidewalk. If we did, if we did the four lanes, would there be room? Not that we're going to do that, I hope, but say if something happened and we, there wouldn't be room for a sidewalk, would there?
There's sidewalks already.
There's already sidewalk out there, but it is true that this one has a landscaped separation, so our sidewalk is tight to the curb. Keep in mind, the curb is not moving, the curb stays where it is.
Yeah, but we don't have sidewalks everywhere, because I walked it, and there, as you go toward the Y, there's no sidewalks.
True, in front of the Ben Franklin area there?
Yeah.
Yep, that's proposed to add sidewalks there.
And in fact, I, those trucks, those trucks, the trucks that go there hit, practically hit the curb. You have to run into the parking lot if you want to live.
Wait till we put the curb extensions on it. We'll see how fast we run.
Okay, so we've got these options, but as I was just saying, yeah, some people are using these green broader bollards to make it more evident, and here you've got a two-way bike lane separated by a painted buffer with bollards.
Too city-ish.
So I'm just trying to give an idea, there, there is, these are not new to country-
The election's not till later.
And just to make it sure, there's a lot of options here, folks, all right? So, I'm sorry. So I think that, I think we covered most of the topics there, and I just wanted to maybe emphasize my near-death experience that I had. I'm sure people will have theirs, but when I went down to Ventura on Sunday to have brunch with my family, extended family, and we went to Cafe Nuvo, which is, you know, it's midtown there, and they've got Thompson, and there's four lanes, and they have a flashing beacon right out front. And I hit the flashing beacon in front of my family, and it was going. I wasn't one of those guys that hit it and ran immediately. I hit it, it was going, and we talked, and then I turned around, just started to step off the curb, and I almost had my head knocked off, because a truck was, did not stop. The car had stopped in the second lane, so I thought I was good. But the close lane to me, which isn't typically what happens, usually the other way around, the close lane, a guy almost killed me, it was extremely close.
And you're an expert, right?
And I, and I should have known better. But it just goes back to if you have, at these locations, a curb extension, that's why they call them high visibility. You step out where you're seen better, and you've got these signage and the flashing beacons out more prominent. You're seen better, and your chances are much higher.
And only one lane to look for.
One lane to look for. So I just want to highlight that, and I think, I think I covered. Any questions?
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, any questions of the city manager or the public works director, before we go to public?
I'm going to let the public speak.
Okay, we ready for a public comment?
Well, I do want to make one thing clear. We, ultimately, we're going to decide on bike lanes for two different, for the whole Maricopa area, and then somewhat on Ojai Avenue as well.
There are three elements, or three-
I understood it, there was no, at least there seems to be no contentiousness regarding the Ojai Avenue. It's a bike lane to the side.
You're misunderstood.
We haven't taken public comment, Greg. But we're not, but just to make sure, we're not just talking about Maricopa Highway for this, we're talking about Ojai Avenue as well. I want to make sure.
I understand the design is open.
It'll be all three legs of this, yeah.
The best we can define this design before it goes to consultant, the more time and money we're all going to save.
Have they already shipped me the cards? They did. Shouldn't send them early, I lose things, yeah. Okay, that's-
We go.
Oh, is this for general comment?
We take the picture down, I mean.
You know, Ron is Ron from the library.
Yeah, right, yeah, why don't we go ahead and do this? Ron, you want to come on up?
Can we take the picture down, since we're in public?
We changed the order.
We had to, and we were-
We were accommodating.
We're just getting ready for-
Well, I, I appreciate that accommodation. I had another meeting earlier, but, yeah. So I'm Ron Solorsano, Regional Librarian for the Ojai Valley. I have something really quick, but I definitely wanted to bring it all to your attention. Later in the month of February, about mid-February, we're going to be having a special program at the library called Food for Fines. It's going to be an opportunity for people to donate food, canned food, to the library in exchange for a forgiveness of certain late fines. So it's going to be, so the date, the date range-
I knew this, I knew this would be well received.
How much food?
The date range is February the 10th to February the 16th, so that's the week of Valentine's Day. We're accepting canned food, not, non-expired would be ideal. And the preference is cans. We prefer no glass, no boxes, anything like that, so cans. And we're doing this in partnership with Food Share, so Food Share is going to be helping us out in, in processing the donations and all of that. But the rate at which we're accepting them is one can is going to be $1 off your late fees. You can absolutely donate canned food if you don't have late fees, we will take it, for sure. And if you have items that you still have out, or lost items, you will have to bring them back, but then, then we can apply this to you. So if you have any questions about that, just reach out to me. We're real excited to be offering this. We're hoping it's, it's the first of many ways that we start looking to bring people back to the library who might be a little bit nervous about coming back if they have fines, but we are very forgiving. So thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure that I let you all know about that.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Okay, I, I see some late deliberate mail, we're okay?
Different line on them.
Okay, I have one more public comment. Deborah, if you want to come up and summarize, so we-
Okay, yeah, so I wanted to share with you, I came last time to talk about our upcoming E-cycle and shredding event, but now we just had that this last Saturday. So I wanted to bring you some metrics for that. And as I had shared, we did bring shredding back to help make up for the void left by the Ojai Community Bank when it was bought out. So this is actually for a four-hour event. It takes quite a bit in planning and executing it, and quite a bit of expense, it's about $5,000 to put it on. Where we used to get paid to recycle electronics, we have to pay them now. So a lot has changed in the industry, let me tell you, over the last 10 years. But we logged about 115 volunteer hours between the planning and executing, with over 600 cars passing through, no fender benders, no one got squished. We almost filled a semi truck and a 40-yard roll-off bin with electronics. We sorted over 1,000 pounds of batteries, collected several boxes of e-media, old holiday lights, and ink toner cartridges. Now, we shipped the holiday lights and the e-media out of the state to get recycled, but I take the ink and toner cartridges, and the household has this waste that people sneak in on us to the county program at the end of the month. And I did want to apologize to anyone who might be viewing this. We did at the end have to start turning people away for the shredding. We filled up the truck. We couldn't afford the second truck, but we did get commitment at this event for next year, so we'll have two trucks and we'll be able to take everything. So that's great. So I did wanted to let you know that we'll be back in 2020, January, for our 12th Annual E-Cycle and Shredding Event. It's usually the second or third Saturday of January. And then with that, I want a short segue into expressing our appreciation to the city of Ojai. Public Works Director Greg Grant, he came out Saturday to check out how everything was going, how the traffic flow was going. We saw where we could make improvements. The first hour was insane. They were backed up to El Roblar on Maricopa Highway before we even opened, and it was iffy, we were going to-
It's an irony.
Yeah. He loaned us safety vests and cones. And so with Greg, and along with Mr. McClary and Chief Freihoff, Chief? They're so accessible and community-minded. It makes all the difference for those of us working in the realm of public and community service to have such great partners. We really appreciate it, and we thank you, the council, for your support, and we thank the Ojai Valley communities for doing the right thing with your stuff.
Okay, the opportunity for the talkback, Nick Oatway. And I have McKinley Barnes on deck. And if you'd like to come up, we have a chair for the on-deck person.
How'd I get to be the first on this? Well, I just want to, I just let, talked to a lady next to me, and I told her how much time has been involved with this ATP grant. And thank you, Greg, and thank you, everybody who, daily or weekly or monthly, has been involved in putting this together. Attention was directed towards the Maricopa Highway Solutions. I'd like to just take a minute to talk about coming into town. And the ATP grant, as I understand it, does include efforts to make coming into town quite a different place from what we have today. I've always been struck, over the years, of coming into town and wanting to just, myself, go and start digging up the asphalt that's everywhere. And I know people need to park, and we, as adults, have one main way of getting from A to B in our lives, which is in a car. But the trees are really something I hope that the council will come down hard on as you come into Ojai, because in the next two years, we could substantially change the experience for all of us and for every visitor. If we do what, the photographs that I saw of what we want to do with the ATP in relation to planting out the entrance to Ojai. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Okay, McKinley, you're up, and Bob Daddy, you're on deck.
Hi, McKinley Barnes, not an Ojai proper resident, but pedal through Ojai on a regular basis.
I'm not either.
Okay.
As is proper.
So I'm super happy this is being discussed, and I way look forward to it being implemented. One of the, I've watched someone be hit by a car on their bike, riding through a crosswalk, which is a real concern, because they, there aren't, people don't feel safe riding their bike through the streets, and we have a lot of visitors. And so I'm constantly wishing that I could be brave enough to stop them from riding on the sidewalks and explain they need to ride in the street, but they don't feel safe in the streets. So my concern is downtown, I mean, Noroff is wonderful, and that's needed as well. And as a side note, there's a lot of research about riding a bike, helping students concentrate who have ADHD, so that's a plus. If kids can ride their bike to school, they can concentrate better. That's huge. So that's just an aside benefit of this possibility. But downtown, I looked at the plan, it just didn't, nothing felt right about downtown's drawings. Is it possible to have one way? I mean, maybe we could, I know there's talk about maybe close the whole, by the arcade down, but could we do one way with bike lane, one-way cars, two-way bike lanes in the arcade, and then the one street over that, where we have our farmer's market and rainbow bridges? And yes, I've lived here 12 years, and I don't know the names of the streets, but- Have that be the other way, you know, so that it's a loop? And that would also help with the situation where you can never, 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 never turn left when you're trying to get out of wherever that street is by the gas station? Yeah, you know, sorry. So that's what I've got to say. So thank you, and I look forward to this happening. And yay, trees, and we can talk to Connor Jones about ways to divert the rainwater and build it such that our rainwater goes to those trees instead of running off into the drains.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Bob, you're up, and Betty Ann, you are on deck.
Good evening. I've been with Complete Streets with Kathy Nolan for, since 2012. We've taken a look at this, we've walked it, it's 4,000 feet from Quayama, El Roblar to the Y. The streets aren't going to get smaller. The emergency service people that we have really know how to drive their vehicles. There's going to be plenty of room. We're not hemmed in on forest fire. We're not going to have a conflagration where the flames are over both ends and do all this stuff. We're just not going to have a problem, because there are so few cars north of El Roblar. We're not going to have hundreds and hundreds of cars rushing to get out in an emergency. So this emergency thing doesn't work for me. Now, the urging of the editor of the paper, I went and spent 10 mornings and called Mr. Grant and said, you know, we need a curb cut, we need an ingress, we need some things, we need cooperation from OSD, we need to have the parking lot where the kids don't come out of that parking lot and grid everybody. That Center Island, where you come in west, make a left, has only got seven parks, seven spots. So about 7:15, when the seven spots for the left lane go in there, we are one lane. We are one lane because they're blocking that lane, so we're a single lane anyhow at 7:15. We also have a circulation issue with those crosswalks, where people are coming up and down, making U-turns on Church Street, circling the block, because they're not going to trust their kids walking across that crosswalk. It's dangerous. Randy, with all due respect, I don't want this to sound negative, you want to know who set the priorities? The fatality at Park in a crosswalk? The fatality at, between Playhouse and The Oaks, where our city trolley ran over Boyd Ford's sister-in-law and killed her in that one? The fatality at Coffee Roasters? The kids that got clocked between Laurel School and Clough? The accidents we continue to have at Country Club? The fatality we have over there? And the other thing that irritates me, at this body, five times I've been here and I've asked, that when we have an accident involving a bike, or a pedestrian, or a car injury, that we get somebody from the city to go out and investigate that? So here's something that I'm not proud of. What it says is, "Ojai is ranked second worst of 75 similar-sized cities in speed-related fatal and injury accidents." Are we going to wait till we're number one to actually do something? We want to, we want to get that prize? This has been going on for years. We didn't used to be second. We used to be fifth, and we used to be 10th, and we used to be 15th, but now we're second. So I think it's time that we get on with this. As far as the design, we got a couple of years. We're going to do what we can do. I'm really not fired up about the trees, but I am fired up about moving the road to two lanes. It's just too fast. The speed is too fast. So we have a fatality there, and we've had a number of kids get hit in that crosswalk. We've had to move the crosswalk from one side of Pyri to the next, so, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Please, give me happy fingers out there, but no applauding or booing. Okay, our next, Betty Ann, you're up, and Jeffrey, is it Starkweather? You're on deck.
Good evening. As a frequent bicycler on the Maricopa Highway, and also as a person who leads a lot of hikes into the, the vent, to the preserves there, to the meadows, I just want to say I support also reducing to one lane on each side. When I schedule hikes for the meadows, and I have groups coming of schoolchildren, of older people, of families, and they have to park along there, and you've got two lanes of traffic coming like right next to the cars, and those cars come so fast, and it's such a, it's becoming a real problem for us to safely unload children and load them back up into the vehicles. Sometimes they come with school vans. And so I'm just saying that I support that it be reduced to one lane on either side, because I do believe it will slow the traffic down, because it will, it just happens to make people more aware of when they're confined, because with the two lanes on each side, it's kind of like, woo-hoo, open highway, or let's, you know, drag race. So I'm just saying, I support the reduction of the lanes on Maricopa Highway.
Thank you. Jeffrey, you're up, and Richard Bradley is next.
Thank you, Jeffrey Starkweather. I live in Miners Oaks, in the home that I grew up in, but I have been away for quite a while. I may be one of the few people that went to both the high schools on those roads. The high school, which was at-
I did, I did.
Which was at, I went, started in 1958 and graduated in 1965, when it was still two lanes. Not once did my parents ever drive me to school. In fact, we used to walk across the cow pasture to get to the junior high school, because I didn't want to walk a half-mile back to the, where the bus stop was. So when you use the word road diet, what does a diet mean? You're going to eat less. We want to be encouraging less driving. And if someone said, kids riding bicycles to school? You know, there's a lot of research on the amount of weight you would lose if you rode a bicycle every single day to school, or even walked to school. Now, I ride the bicycle all the time on that road, and I also drive on it. I've been there when school gets out and when school's going in. Compared to other schools that I've been around, this is not much of a traffic jam, and it doesn't last very long. But I would say that riding the bicycle on there is very dangerous. I have gone around cars on the right-hand lane just to get around them, and almost been run over by a truck. When you're coming back west off the bike trail, and you try to go back towards Miners Oaks, cutting across that road is like putting your life in other cars' hands. And so what I end up doing is going down the curb, or the walkway, into the shopping center, and come out at Valero and walk across the street. That's the only safe way to go. And guess what? I've almost been run over a couple of times, walking my bike across that street, where someone hasn't even stopped. So I'm very strong in favor of what you're doing. I observed, I was at one of the meetings, I think your engineer and all the people who've done work have really addressed these problems really well. It's time to go forward with it. You know, back, maybe 40 years ago, Zelma Wilson was an architect who helped the city design the back of the arcade. Now, I grew up in the back of the- Now, I grew up when the back of the arcade was just a dump. And I remember at one point, and I've gone back and read the minutes of the town board when all this was being discussed over a long period of time, and they had already made the little walkway back there and the area, and she was talking about what those, which are now commercial buildings, two-story buildings back there? And somebody on the board, who happened to be a businessman, said, well, wait a minute here, isn't this going to be competition for us? And she pointed out something, and this is importance of being a visionary, I think, and you need to be visionary.
Your time, your time is running out, so you want to wind up?
Yeah, one sentence. She pointed out to them a basic concept, which is, we call agglomeration of businesses coming together. You're actually going to get more business, which obviously turned out to be true. And that's been a great addition to the town. I think the aesthetic, the safety, the health, all these things fit into the values that we love about Ojai, so I appreciate what you're doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Richard Bradley and Russell Sidney's on deck.
Good evening. My name is Richard Bradley. I live in the city of Ojai. I'm a bicyclist, and I walk a lot around town. I also have a car, but I want to enthusiastically support this project. I think it can be a wonderful thing for our community, and I especially like the importance of connecting the city of Ojai to Miners Oaks through the Maricopa Highway improvements. That would be a real welcome improvement on a bicycle to be able to do that. So, thanks for hanging in there for all these meetings, and also thanks to your staff for all the good work done.
Thank you. Russell, you're up, and Christine Brennan's on deck.
Good evening. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. My name is Russell Sidney from Miramonte. I'm the co-founding organizer of the Sustainable Transport Network, with 15 years of bicycle advocacy experience, and almost two years working on the Complete Streets Committee, going through the details of the master plan, and reviewing all of the, all of the school traffics, like what SUZA has been through recently, and also reviewing all the possible alternative routes in town. Ojai Avenue and the Maricopa Highway include the most dangerous places to ride in this area. Creating the right bicycle safety features on these roadways is the only thing that will let the whole community become a bicycle-safe community. Please consider the priorities to adjust for bicycle safety needs. The following are the specific priorities of concern. Please add a priority for providing safe places for bicycles to cross these highways, as SUZA was talking about. The existing layout is for vehicle safety. Pedestrian crossings work for pedestrians. Bicycles have needs that are not in the priority list on the report, and there are specific needs that bicycles have in this area. Having a specific place, meaning a separate bicycle crossing from the pedestrian crossing, is part of that need, because, in part, because riding with pedestrians endangers the pedestrians. Having bicycle crossings on both sides of an intersection so that bicyclists don't have to go from one side of the road to the other to cross the intersection is essential. They need, bicyclists need to be able to activate the flashing lights at these critical intersections. They need protected places that do not require bicyclists to walk their bikes or to ride on the fast highways. The places we need these are at the Y, at Church, and the Rio on Maricopa. This is needed in order to get from Miners Oaks to town, and to get to Nordoff, to the shopping, and to the places of employment on Maricopa. We also need them at Country Club, Bristol, particularly Ventura Avenue, and a connection between Drown and Fulton. We also need the, boy, that three minutes sure disappears. We also need to have fully protected bikeways on both sides of Maricopa Avenue, and have them next to the curb so the bicyclists are not exposed to car doors opening or riding next to high-speed vehicles. Lots more to say? Thank you.
Real quickly, I just want to say that it, no matter what we do, it is never safe to ride your bike across the crosswalk. If there's, there's never, I've never seen a separate crosswalk for bikes, but you should be walking those bikes across the crosswalk.
That's why they have developed specifications and ways to enable bicycles to cross safely.
Okay, thanks, Russell.
Yeah, just a correction. You may not have seen them, but they exist, and you can see.
It's not in our proposal, but either way, I would say that generally, the one thing that you should not be doing is riding that bike across the crosswalk. It's more dangerous to walk, that's all.
That's correct. You should walk your bike.
I agree. The details of those crossings are in the report that I presented to council on numerous occasions.
Okay. Thank you, Russ. Okay, Christine, and Ron Palito's on deck.
Hi, I'm Christine Brennan, Miners Oaks resident, and whenever possible, I try and ride my bike instead of use my car if I need to get into town, and obviously, I'm really excited about this whole proposal, because Maricopa Highway is really an unsafe place for anybody to be biking. And I really also want to stress the importance of, especially with this opportunity, to put in as many live trees as possible, and it's so important in our valley now to plant and replant as much as possible, and I just think this project is a perfect time to do that and make sure that gets in there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Ron, please, happy fingers. Ron Palito with Reno Relais on the.
Ron Palito, 12087 McDonald Drive, Ojai.
And Greg?
I wanted to, my Italian temper is carrying you into the phone here tonight. I apologize, you've done a really good job and worked very hard. You're a little test to do, but that's okay. We're going to work on that.
Yeah, right. So, Ron, you're a little test to do to him.
Okay, just very simply, I produced a product for you to review. I take very seriously the hard work I went through 11 years ago with the planning commission to make the entry to Ojai beautiful, and to make a project that was pedestrian-friendly, had a village appeal, and every storefront looked as a separate piece of property. And I don't want to see those efforts that we worked so hard on neglected and missed in this big picture. I just want to be real clear. When I saw those trees in the rendering at your very first charrette, I've known Dave Sargent for 35 years. I said, Dave, what do you have trees in the center of the street for? You don't have any trees on the other side of the street balancing it. Where's the balance? He goes, oh, that was just eye candy. It was just to give an idea what you could do. Well, that seemed to have stuck, and Greg and I have been at loggerheads about that for a long, long time, and hopefully, we're going to get this resolved. Lastly, I really, really know what to do with the development to make it successful, and I put my money where my mouth is. And my A Bello project is extremely successful because I have plenty of onsite parking, and that project was never intended to have the cars parked in front of it and block the architecture. That's not what the planning commissioners wanted. So, when I'm told that my people, my project needs cars parked down Ojai Avenue at the entry to make it look like a parking lot, like when you walk, drive into downtown Carmel, I'm sorry, that's not how, that's not how it rolls. So, I didn't know how to convince Greg any other way than provide an independent document from a reputable planner. So, I like the idea, I like everything you're doing. Thank you very much, and I wish you all the best.
Thanks, Ron. Reno, you're up, and Harland is next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Happy belated New Year. I'm super grateful, and actually, a little bit excited about the project. I think most of you know that. You know, to me, it seems the issue is the Maricopa stretch that's most, I guess, contested. And I think it's important to sort of remind ourselves, maybe, that this is, as I understand it, a, an example of sort of something that was over-engineered or for a project that never materialized. So, I believe that it's maybe a case of bigger's not always better. I remember when I was a kid, the first computer I saw, I think, was about the size of this room. And now, I'm pretty sure I can do everything that thing did with this gadget here in my hand. So, I think that may be a case, right? So, also, you know, I think it's important, as we endeavor to work through this process, for me, there are a few things I love seeing more than children with backpacks, heading to school, future leaders of the world. Maybe one thing I love seeing more than that are kids walking or biking to school. And I think it's critically important that we stay focused on that, the safety of these children, the safety of the other members of our community, and really, at all times, doing what's best for them. It's interesting, there are some great statistics. One that I'm aware of, not too long ago, the USA Today published an article about obesity in children, and it's estimated that up to a third of our kids are obese or on the brink of becoming so. And that if we don't stop treating children and adjusting the behavior and practices of these kids for the first time in history, experts are predicting that parents will outlive their children. It's a big deal. Seeing kids on bicycles, seeing kids walking will benefit the children, it'll benefit the community, it'll benefit the environment, and I think, as we work through this, we should sort of keep that in mind and prioritize what's, what's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Reno. Harland, you're up, and Kathy Bennett's on deck.
Hi, everybody. My name's Harland Demuth. I go by Skip. Starting, we're starting in our eighth year of living in Ojai, down on Lion Street, and I better keep my glasses on. So, I'm 74 years old, and I almost exclusively ride a bike for all my business and recreation in Ojai. And this includes many trips on my bike from Lion Street down to the hospital area for dental, dental work and doctor's visits. And we actually own a piece of property down there off Church Road. I was coming back from there the other day on my bike, and I stepped out, you know, we got, you got four lanes, and you got a couple faded crosswalks, like, it's a, it's a train wreck there. The whole thing is a train wreck. I mean, and I congratulate Greg and, and the staff and the energy the council's put into working on this, this project. Classic, the other day, when I went to push my bike on a crosswalk, one car stopped and the next one didn't. So, I was lucky for the first one, but it could have been really unlucky for the second one. The safety features for pedestrians and bikes along that whole way are virtually nonexistent, which is, by any measure, unacceptable. So, I would, I really endorse the general concept of the project, and, and look forward to its implementation as soon as possible, and that's, that's about it. So, good luck on everything.
Okay. Thank you, Skip. Good to meet you. Kathy, you're up, and Linda Harmon's on deck.
Hello. I really support this project. This is like, I'm a walker. Now, I walk 30 miles, maybe 40 miles a week, and I never, never go near the Y. And I would love to walk over to like Besset Meadows, it used to be called, but now it's Ojai Meadows, or go over to Miners Oaks, see that beautiful place, but I don't. I have to drive. So, I really want to see this happen, and I want to see four lanes go down to two, and I really want to have safety in our community. So, thank you so much for working on this. Bye.
Thank you. Okay, Linda's up, and I want to say her better half, no, Lenny's on deck.
I'm a resident of Ojai. I'm totally supportive of the plan. I'm for everything that, right from the beginning, from the very, and I love the option with the trees. I think it's really important. I, I have been working with Ojai Trees since it started. I am with the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. We couldn't, we contribute to Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. I just think this whole plan is so reflective of a way of moving in, in the world, that we should be going forward with it. I, I can't understand how anybody would object to this program. I, I don't bike myself, but I did volunteer at the Green Coalition Recycling Event this weekend, and I had the wonderful job of doing the traffic control at the very beginning, where Deborah was talking about all the traffic backing up. And I'm telling you, with those four lanes of traffic, and everybody not paying any attention to the signs, I had a big, you know, green vest on. I was taking my life in my hands, and I was on the sidewalk. People are not, they, they know where they want to go, and they have like tunnel vision. If you only have two lanes there, it's so much easier to get across, it's so much easier to make a turn, and the cut that he's brought up, that's a fabulous idea. And, and I know trees, we were talking about cutting, cutting costs, I don't think trees are one way to cut them. I think they're really important, because people are not going to want to bike or walk if it keeps getting hotter and hotter, and that's tending to be what's happening. And the tree makes it more, more, more of a pleasant environment to walk in. It's 20 degrees cooler under a tree, and I think we all moved, a lot of us moved here because of the trees, so.
Mr. Ray, can I ask Linda a question about the trees?
No. Can we do, can we hold that until we get through the rest of the comments? What?
Just, just, just a thought I want to put out, okay? If we don't have enough money for the trees, can we start a fund for the trees through, and Ojai, with Ojai Trees? I just want to put out that idea.
I love that idea.
If we don't have the money, because there's enough people that want the trees, we can find the money, I mean, donate the money.
I think we can.
Yeah, donations, okay.
Okay, Lenny, you're up, and Kathy Nolan's on deck.
Leonard Clay, 412 North Fulton Street. First, I want to thank Greg and Steve McCleary and everybody on staff who's worked so hard on this for so many years, and I especially want to thank SUZA, who's been pushing this for many decades. And, and your hard work and constant, constant repetition on this issue has changed minds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Behaney asked, who, whose proposals these are? I don't think it matters who actually signed the piece of paper submitting it. It's clear from the meeting tonight that the proposals are what the people in the city of Ojai want, and it's been repeated time after time after time at every public forum for the 30 years that I've been in town. So, who signs it? Who cares? This is what we want. Two things, the, the trees and the safety go hand in hand, because if you want people to walk and bicycle, they need to be safe and they need to be comfortable. And when it's 105 degrees, you need trees to bring it down to something bearable, and it's going to be 105, 110 more frequently as our temperature changes are continuing. Trees are an integral part, because it can be safe as possible, and nobody's going to want to walk a bicycle down the street when it's 105 degrees outside. Trees are good. You know, more trees, the better. I've been to a couple of the forums on this issue. I've read the online stuff, whatever, you know, the threads, if that's the right word. Some of the objections, I don't, bewildering. The objection that somehow traffic is going to be slowed when we have to evacuate, as if having a mile of four-lane highway that feeds into nothing but two lanes in every other direction is going to make a difference, I, that one I just don't get. If somebody can explain that, please do. The, the fire trucks and the other emergency vehicles in the event of a fire or an earthquake that were parked along, the streets still can be along Maricopa, or they can be in the, I'm sure St. Thomas Quinus would allow the parking lot to be used. Parking for emergency vehicles is not an issue. We were in New York a couple, couple of months ago, and they, most of the streets in Queens and Manhattan have this division of streets of, of parking, bicycle, and, and traffic, and the bulbous on the corners, and you get across the street much faster because you're already a third of the way in before you have to worry about cars. So, you have a much shorter distance to cross. Please go forward with this as expeditiously as possible. Nobody's going to get every detail of any project of this size absolutely correct, especially in hindsight, but, but the lack of perfection. But the lack of perfection as a likely end is not a reason not to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. Okay, Kathy, you're up. Nolan and Deborah Pendry is on deck.
Mayor Johnson, City Council members and staff, Kathy Nolan, Planning Commissioner and Chair of Complete Streets, which is under Planning Commission, and I've been the chair since 2011. I'm also here, I want to thank the city of Ojai. I actually, I'm sitting there, I'm going, I feel really proud to stand up here and say, I'm a Planning Commissioner and I got to chair this committee. Proud of my community, all these members of the public that have participated over the years to write the policy, the master plan, and be part of the ATP grant and this whole process. I think it's pretty amazing, you know, just to be standing up here and that we're at where we are. So there's that. But I also wanted to share something, and something I've mentioned before, and some of you have heard this, but in 2011, through Complete Streets, we chaired a workshop here at City Hall, and we invited two key players from Caltrans District Seven. One of them's head of Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordination for the entire district, and the other one was one of the head traffic engineers. And we got to do a meeting televised through the state with the Complete Streets chair at the time for the state level. And then we actually rode on bikes, Souza will remember, and we rode all through town, and we actually went all the way up the Maricopa Highway and into Miners Oaks. But as we were doing this, we made frequent stops, and the two Caltrans members pointed out to us different things that could happen and that we could do potentially to make improvements. And when we got to the Maricopa Highway, they stopped and they said, oh, four lanes, we're phasing the four lanes out. This is our new trend statewide. Anywhere a state highway goes through a town or is a part of a main street, we're narrowing it down. And they made that suggestion. So that was, I think, probably one of the first times we all heard, and that's where the idea came up from, or came from. But, so there was that. And then another thing I also wanted to share was through Complete Streets, we've done different Safe Route to School projects. Some of them have been like one day, or they've been in a week project. But in addition, we worked with the National Complete Streets Organization, and they have forms that you could send out to schools, to the staff and to parents. And we did that. We did it through quite a few of the public schools in the Ojai Unified School District. We did it at Oak Grove, and there may have been one other private, I'll quickly wrap it up. But anyway, long story short, we gathered all this data, and then we sent it back to the National Complete Streets, and they tabulated. And basically, the outcome was, parents and staff both said, oh, we don't allow our kids in general to walk or ride bikes to school because it's not safe, but yes, we would like to. And even one of the local schools said, they sent out a notice at the beginning of the year and told, encouraged their students not to ride bikes because it wasn't safe. So I just wanted to say, I am for this project. I am for reducing the lanes down to two, and I definitely am for trees wherever we can have them for the many different reasons that have been discussed tonight. And I could say more like many other people, but my time's up.
Thank you. Okay, Renee Roth, no, pardon me, Deborah's up and Renee's on deck. Sorry, Deborah.
That's okay. Thank you very much. I actually forgot to mention that I was representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition when I got up before, talking about the E-cycle and Shred Event. I'm representing myself now, and I live at 309 Riverside Road in Oakview. And I would like to urge the council to opt for trees, wherever trees versus shrubs or nothing are being considered in the ATP project. In particular, looking at the staff report who is recommending shrubs when it comes to the street trees and landscaping in the median on Ojai Avenue just east of Kenyatta Street. And I'm quoting from that report, "The owner of the development just north of the proposed median is concerned trees may obscure the view of businesses there. While that may be true, if we plant young trees and while they're growing, the other benefits of trees to businesses offset this issue many times over." And I was really checking this part out about the economics here. So I got nothing against shrubs. Shrubs are nice. But trees really pencil out on any cost-benefit analysis. Studies show, and I can give the actual studies, large mature trees, street trees are found to be the most important indicator of attractiveness in a community. The more trees and landscaping a business district has, the more business will flow in. A tree-lined street will also slow traffic enough to allow the drivers to look at the storefronts instead of whizzing by. Shoppers are willing to pay up to eleven percent more for products purchased in shops along tree-lined streets than they would pay for the same item in a barren setting. And the quality of products were perceived as being better in a shopping district where trees were there instead of barren sidewalks. Shoppers stay longer in plazas with trees. Strategically placed trees can cut summer air conditioning costs for businesses by as much as fifty percent. Rental rates of commercial office properties are approximately seven percent higher on sites having quality landscape including trees. Office workers with a view of nature are more productive, report fewer illnesses, and have higher job satisfaction. Yeah, so there's the economics for you. In forty-two seconds, we all know about the environmental benefits. And I would think, depending on what you choose, that trees actually have less maintenance than shrubs can when you're thinking about the maintenance year in and year out. So anyways, we know that trees clean the air by catching the airborne pollutants. Trees remain one of the cheapest, most effective means of drawing excess CO2 from the atmosphere. They reduce topsoil erosion. Let's see, urban trees reduce crime, increase public safety and build community. They help create relaxation and well-being. They reduce noise pollution. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Renee Roth is up, and Peggy, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor Johnny and members of the council for the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking as a resident of Ojai who lives right off of Maricopa Highway. So every time I go to my home and from my home, I have to enter onto Maricopa Highway where the gas station is, across from Vons. There are sixty-nine condominiums of sorts that have units back there, and I never walk to the store. I never walk to Vons because it is not safe to cross the street. And I'm not proud to say that, but I have to tell you that. I do not cross the street. There is no way to safely cross that street at that intersection. People are coming around the Y in the morning, dropping their kids off, and they accelerate in two lanes, going around that corner to get their kids to Nordoff. It is not safe to cross that street. It is very scary. The other thing I want to add is, I have to say, I almost hit one of my neighbors as I was driving toward Miners Oaks who was crossing the street. I, he was crossing with the dog. He was in the middle lane, two lanes going this way, two lanes going this way, and the sun was in my eyes. You know, when the sun is coming through in that area of the highway? It was blinding. I couldn't see him. I see this man stopping in the street, like, what's going on? And it's my neighbor! And I felt horrible, awful. I almost hit him and his dog. So I'm just trying to make the major point. There's no way to safely cross a four-way highway, four-lane highway, unless you have these bulbous or curb extensions. So in my mind, the single lane is absolutely essential. And also, the curb extensions are very important. The other thing I want to say is that at Creekside, we've had the fire department out to talk about safety where we live, and we have a gate on Del Norte. And the fire department said, if there's a fire nearby, we will knock down the gate. No questions asked. We will knock it down. Why not have an emergency evacuation plan where every owner of property on that road knows that all the gates should be open? All of the roadways from like the hospital up the hill into the back area could be used as an evacuation area. The other last thing I want to say, I know I just have a second. I was at the Y. There was an emergency vehicle crossing the street, coming from Ventura at the Y into town. Because of all the traffic, there was no way to get up into town. So we were all at the Y, and this emergency vehicle with one lane this way, one lane this way, he made it through. I crowded up Del Norte Road, and he followed me up Del Norte Road, and we made it. So I just want you to know, you can make it.
Thank you, Renee. Yeah, good. And thanks for not running over your neighbor just to make a point. That was good.
I'll be really brief. I just want to express my support of this plan and my appreciation for everybody who's worked on it, the members of the Complete Streets Project, Kathy Nolan, the council, Mr. Grant, and especially Souza Francina for having the vision so long ago. I remember when I first moved to Ojai back at the turn of the last century. Souza, with her Dutch heritage, talking consistently about what Ojai would be like if everybody rode their bikes. And I had come from Santa Barbara, and I had a wonderful bike. I lived right by Alameda Park, and I almost got killed every time I tried to get on my bike because I'm kind of small, my bike was kind of small, it was a racing bike, and cars would open their doors like right into where I was trying to drive. So I really love the idea of the separate lane with trees, and I appreciate Deborah Pendry's expression of all the data that supports the myriad reasons why trees are such a terrific idea, and particularly with our air quality, and just for the beauty and the mental health aspects and getting kids out in the neighborhoods. Anyway, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Peggy. Garrett Clifford and Heath Perry's on deck.
Hi, my name's Garrett Clifford. I live at 207 East Eucalyptus. I've lived in Ojai for thirty years. I'm the president of Ojai Trees, and I'm also a founding member of the Ojai Cyclists. So this project is near and dear to me. Obviously, large stature trees are what we need. We need canopy, we need something to cool, we need to do all the things Deborah mentioned trees do. Ojai Trees has worked with Public Works. We've contributed a number of trees over the past four years that have all gone into some of the new pop-outs and the planting areas. We're going to continue to do that, and if we put all our energy into trees for the city, you know, don't hold back. Let's plant as many large trees as you want, because I'm sure we can raise the funds necessary for the trees. There's a lot of people in our community. Every planting, we just had a planting last Saturday, five or six new volunteers came. They're all passionate, they all want to get involved. Our email list is growing. We're up to over five hundred people now that stay in touch with us. And trees aren't going to be an issue in getting them. Just find me a spot to plant them and we'll plant them. So thank you, Greg. He's done a wonderful job. Enjoyed my five years, six years now, five, six years he's been here. It's been great. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Okay, Heath, you're up, and Michael Shapiro, you're on deck.
I'm Heath Perry. I live at 111 Rincon. When I first moved here, I was in a position where I couldn't even afford to own a car, so I had a bike. And I actually moved from Los Angeles and experienced some pretty, much more hairy bike riding there than here, thankfully. But, you know, for me, a lot of this has been addressed, and especially that aspect of being able to safely go from Ojai to Miners Oaks, which we all want to be able to do. And the only safe way is to go through the Alberlata, or at least the safest, which, if you've ever done it, I think most of the people that maybe are against some of this is they're not really experienced of how terrifying it can be on a bike when a big vehicle goes by you. And they go by you like they're going by a car. And, you know, there's even a requirement in the state to give a certain amount of space, but most of the people that do that don't pay attention to those regulations. So you get blown by where, I had a friend that actually got hit by a side-view mirror and knocked him into another person on a bike, and luckily they didn't get injured horribly, but that's the kind of stuff that we're dealing with out there, just trying to get to work, to get to wherever we need to go, to get to the space. And I think it's really important. And I really appreciate all the plans that have been come up with, with everybody, and especially the one and one A and two, where there's really that aspect of going to a single lane. And as someone who's biked for over twenty years, and I've biked in Miami, Denver, Los Angeles, and it's like, there's just something about two lanes that makes those people that want to get after it, get after it, especially when there's space to do so. And bringing it down to one, really, it's a drastic difference in the safety that you feel as a biker. So that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Heath. Okay, Michael.
Good evening, council and distinguished staff. Michael Shapiro, Ojai. Couple of things, short points really, as a bonus, the silver lining in this wonderful, wonderful project that Greg, you've worked so hard to present. About eight months ago, I was able to get from you, I don't know if they're the same sketches, schematics, but something very similar, and I presented it at an appeal hearing down at the Board of Supervisors. We were trying once again to limit, to have strict limits on the amount of industrial trucks coming down from Highway 33 in the Las Padres Forest. And I could tell you that when we showed those up on the big screen on two sides of the Hall of Administration, you could see the planning staff's faces go way down, you know? Brian Baca was pretty furious about it because he knew that such a reduction of lanes would make it even more, more antithetical for industrial trucking to use that spot, to be coming down in caravans from the Las Padres Forest. So this project is, in addition to all the other great things about it that have been mentioned tonight, is that extra bonus, that little insurance policy that we need to make sure we can have an edge in preventing massive caravans of industrial trucks coming down and going into our highway. Another thing, the project really is breathtaking in its scope and the way it would change Ojai for the better. And speaking of breath, trees clean the air. They take out carbon dioxide, they replace it with oxygen, they provide homes to birds. Birds are essential. Birds are being challenged in this country. If Ojai could be a community that in fact enhances the homes for birds to multiply and propagate, we've done a great thing for nature and for our own health. And finally, I have three experiences where, both at the Coffee Roaster, one at the Ben Franklin Intersection, another one at El Ralbar, where I've had to get out of my car. People were waiting in two cases, a woman with a baby carriage and a baby in her hand, and another one, just a woman with two children either side. They could not, they stepped into the crosswalk, cars just would not stop. They just would not stop. Even at the stop sign at El Ralbar, they would go through this, they would stop briefly and then go ahead, would not let this person go. I had to get out of my car and put the blinker on and go like a school crossing guard. So anything we could do to enhance the safety of something so basic as that is just a huge addition. So I thank you for your vision and for your courage to move this forward.
Okay, Michael's was the last card I have, so I guess we will take another deliberation here for the council.
I have a couple of questions.
Bill.
First of all, I want to let everybody know, for the first time I even saw this thing, you know, I was thrilled. I mean, to imagine that we get rid of that last remnant of free-boy mentality and go from four lanes to two. You know, I contemplate how, if you're driving around, actually anywhere in the Ojai Valley, what two pieces of roads do you get on and go, I just doesn't feel right, I'm out of place? And it's that section of 33, and I would say also the section in Oakview, where it just doesn't feel, you know, you feel out of place. You don't feel like you're part of the community, part of the ambiance of the Ojai Valley. But I wanted to get to a couple specifics, so I just want everybody to know where I'm coming from. Greg, you know, one of my major concerns that all along has been that the Greg, you know, one of my major concerns that all along has been that the sanitary district be able to do recurring maintenance and repair on their sewer main without having to block traffic in terms of when we go from one lane in each direction. And it wasn't clear from your presentation whether or not we have incorporated the ability to do that servicing without blocking the one lane traffic each way, or which options that's compatible with that and which options it's not. Because we, I think, I would hope we could all agree, we want to go to one lane each way, but we don't want to have to, we also want to be able to let the sanitary district do their recurring maintenance and repair. So are they all compatible with that or not?
I think what we committed to in the plan was on that stretch from church to El Roblar, I'm sorry, from Pyri, from Pyri Alawella to El Roblar, is to not have the trees. And that was really about, they were concerned the roots could get over to their pipeline.
Well, they were also concerned about blocking traffic to do their maintenance and repair.
The block, the way that's accommodated is the bike lane, 11 and 12 foot wide. They can either do it right at church or they can do it at any point, because you got, you can just block parking and have a lane. We can have certain areas where trees are spaced further to provide that provision. And you can go ahead and use the bike lane, you just have that.
So we are going, that is part of the parameters, is that we're going to allow that infrastructure to be serviced without blocking the one remaining lane in each direction?
Right. Essentially using the bike lane as detour lane if necessary.
The temporary.
Yeah. With the backup being church to Kuyama.
And the other question I had is, what is the rationale for two lane bike? First of all, definitely in favor of the two lane bike path on the south side, the high school side. You have some with two lane bike lanes on both sides, north and south. What's the rationale for that as opposed to, are there design considerations that open up if we don't do both on both sides?
The section from El Roblar to church, since that's a fully separated bike path there, and there's enough room with that 11 and 12 foot to make sure we have accommodations for a detour, you can provide a two-way bike on both sides. And since there's no driveways there, it's not really a safety concern.
Okay. And the other, this comment I'm going to make is something I'm...
Before you go past that, but if you only have the bike lane, is this on the north, what would it be called, the north side?
Right. Northbound, north side, both the same, it's kind of weird.
You know, where you said there's no driveways, but if that particular section is isolated, what's the benefit?
It would be, primarily it is on the south side. People have come from Miners Oaks when they're going to school in the morning, they're going to go with traffic, right? But on the way home, they wouldn't tend to cross church, go all the way down El Roblar and come back. So it's really...
I can see it on the south side.
It's on the south side, it's more intent...
Also getting the safe place for students to come back and forth, especially, you know. So I understand all that.
Yeah, and on the north side...
It's the two lane on both sides that I was curious about.
Seems like if there's two lanes on the south side...
It's really more, it's, the need for it is not as much as the south side, absolutely. It's just that with no driveway cuts, two-way works and it's just consistent on both sides, you could go either way. There's no...
Couple of comments? And then, why haven't we seen a layout of a drop off zone or a drop off lane with the traffic in and out at the school system, on the campus? I mean, that's kind of seen, part of integrally what makes all of this work perfectly or much better, is to show how the people would be dropped off on the school property and not on the street, in terms of ingress and egress and drop off zone.
So in the parking lot?
I haven't seen that yet.
Okay, I might have been confused because I thought before people were concerned with the frontage on Maricopa, how the drop off was. So I did a close up on the December meeting, what that looks like. But you're saying in the parking lot?
Yes.
I see. So in the parking lot...
To me, it just make, I think the school system's endorsed the whole concept. All right. Why would you have, why would you have drop off in a bike lane or on the street when you can have it in the parking lot? There's plenty of room.
I think a lot of people are not willing to take that extra time to drive into the parking lot. They'd rather do it up front and get going to work.
But if there was an ingress and egress that's easy...
Still going to be slower.
I understand that, but at the expense of danger?
So, I mean, we agreed to create that concept, but we never did.
Why mix pedestrians with either bikes or automobiles when you don't have to? I guess is my question.
Right. I think we're leaving right now, it's an option to the parent, whether they drop off up front or drive into the school. People seem to very roughly split it half and half. A lot of people drop up front. So we didn't, we're not intending to remove that option from anybody, to keep it the way it is.
I just want to, I want to just comment on...
Same subject?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll go with, we'll work our way this way. Go ahead Susa.
Okay. But let's keep in mind Greg, that all of this, once this infrastructure is in place, then we can do the education. We can get, you know, the kids can get PE credit, they can learn, they can tie it into their environmental studies. And the parents will feel better if they still want to drive, need to drive their kids. These kids could be dropped off at Vons or at Church Road because we're going to have safe crosswalks. There's no need for the parents to drop their kids three feet away from the classroom. They can still get a little walking in. So everything, there's going to be a big shift. There's going to be a major paradigm shift if we do this. So a lot of these issues that we're, you know, worried about now will resolve step by step because education is going to be a major component of this.
I just want to make sure we're compatible with that.
Ryan's up.
Yeah. Well, I'll just say, it's, when you're, you know, I went to Nordoff, I walked to school, I lived behind Nordoff, but walking with a 40 pound backpack isn't always as simple as everybody makes it sound either. The, Greg, I have a question for Ojai Unified School District. When you consulted with them, did they have, I mean, really, I would say, shouldn't this decision, whether it's a cutout and they stop there, they go onto campus, it seems to me like that would be something we would defer to the logic of the Unified School District, rather than us make a decision for them. In your discussions with them, did they even, did they propose an on-campus thing or was it just they liked the cutout and did they feel it was safe enough with the cutout and the drop off?
They're very supportive of on parking lot management and they were open to the idea of us trying to route traffic further in and correct where, at the time, most of the traffic entering the parking lot was backing up and blocking up and that's what stacked the traffic out onto the southbound lane. And so they're very open to proposals and ideas on how to fix that.
Now, let me ask you another question. The hypothetically, now, when I went to Nordoff, it was when it was at that peak, you know, kids were parking across the street. There's hundreds of kids who are crossing that street every day because we had to park across the street. Parking lot wasn't big enough. The hypothetically, if Nordoff grows back to that size or something similar, or if the Cardy property, that empty lot, is developed at some point, for whatever reason, hypothetically, will all of this be compatible with that? Are we going to have to have a massive refiguring out of how that area would work if any of that happens?
Right now, we already have development from church all the way back. If there was some kind of giant development, kind of, you know, Walmart, Costco, unlike I admit, but...
Greg, you just said, we're putting it out, you just said we're putting it to Walmart. You are now held accountable for it.
But those kind of play, they have to intense traffic analysis to try to make sure they mitigate their issues. So, yeah, I mean, that's, I think why there's four lanes there, is at one time that was considered to be the shop mall of Ojai Valley when it exploded someday.
Okay. So pretty much anything we're anticipating, at least at this point, is that, and if there was a new development in there that we ever approved, for some reason that was bigger, they would be required as part of their costs of developing that to modify anything as necessary.
We're proposing that separated bike lane and it's not ideal from church back to the Y, but there are benefits, you know, like Mr. Sidney was saying, there's advantages to it, but it can complicate exiting driveways. So they'd have to deal with that when they design their entrances to their development.
No way, impossible. Right. Thank you.
Randy?
Hey, so it looks like we're going to go in a circle here, which is good, it's beneficial.
I'm sure not to forget you down there.
You know, to me, the whole discussion tonight is surrounded around safety. That's what I'm hearing. And I don't think it's, there's anyone up here that's against children or adults walking and children and adults riding bicycles in this community. So I don't think that's the issue. So I just want to be clear on that because for some reason, I think that there's some pros and cons out there and so therefore if you don't agree 100% with what's presented, you therefore are the enemy. Whereas the reality here is we're all here to help create a safe environment for our whole community, not a segment, not a part of, but our whole community. So when I'm weighing in, I'm looking at the whole and my questions will be, you know, presented in that manner. So I guess the biggest concern that I have about Maricopa Highway, and it's not necessarily the reduction of lanes, as much as it is, what problem are we solving? Because I haven't seen, you know, I understand the need, but I don't see a problem. So I guess that's one of my concerns. The other thing that I hear is, we're going to take traffic up to the Y and then we're going to drop it off and stop it. And again, that's another part of my concern is, how are we safely going to take someone once they reach the Y, or not the Y, but Five Points? How are we going to safely now at that point, direct them back into our community, heading east, or going across Maricopa Highway and going into Miners Oaks? So my concern is, is we're taking them to a certain point and we're stopping. And that just doesn't seem like a well-thought-out, safe plan at this stage. Doesn't mean that we won't have more of them, but at this stage. And then my other concern is as we're heading down from Five Points to the Y, is getting the pedestrians on and the bicyclists on the, we're going to call it the south side, I would call it the west side, but across Maricopa, 33, and then over to the bike lane. That's always just been a concern of mine, that I don't have a sense that we've thought it out well enough at this point, just from a safe standpoint. So those are my two concerns on Maricopa. Then as we head from the Y to town, I guess my concern about putting pedestrian and bicycle traffic on the main highway there, on the 150, again, it just seems like we're creating an unsafe environment when we have a bicycle path or a bicycle trail that runs parallel to the 150. And why we're not trying to create an environment where we move people to that specific area more safely and allow them to enter downtown more safely. So I have a concern going west to east. Now, one gentleman did talk about going east to west, and I do understand that and I do believe that that's a real difficult component of this whole project and how we're going to address the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists on that area. So again, my concerns are going to be, are going to be safety issue and I have quite a few more regarding it. I'll just let everyone else weigh in some more.
Could I help answer that, the question that he asked? Why doesn't everybody just divert to the bike path? That was one of the questions you had. And the answer to that is because it could add another 10, 15 minutes to your commute time. You want to take, when you're, especially when you're a cyclist or walking, you want to take the most direct path home. This morning, I went through the, you know, Pyri, through the Arbola. If I go, if I go to bike trail, it's going to, it doesn't go directly to my house. It's just not practical. I think the biggest thing, if you're not a cyclist, is to really understand the difference between recreational and practical daily life transportation. The bike trail just doesn't go to Rainbow, it doesn't go to the store, it doesn't do everything. Plus, it's not a dedicated bike trail. You have to go really slow compared to how you can go on a street because it's a mixed use trail with kids, dogs, et cetera. That's just off the top of my head. There's probably other reasons as well.
I want to add a couple of comments and because I'm becoming much more sensitized to this now that I have, I'm blessed with parents who are still alive in their 90s. And their mobility is constrained by the fact that they want, they would want to maintain mobility in low-speed electric vehicles, realize that electric bikes and electric trikes are now legal on dedicated bike paths by state law, which are much safer than, you know, being in a small four-lane vehicle. But my father in particular is, you know, he agrees, you know, I shouldn't be driving anymore as opposed to, you know, Prince Philip. And, you know, but he would, but he lives, you know, he does not have a safe path of travel for him to, you know, maintain his mobility in an appropriate vehicle. And that's only going to be more and more of an issue as we, as we all age in this community. And, you know, it's interesting, Craig Walker supplied a communication to us about age-appropriate design that AARP is launching. And I think it's the kind of thing that we should also be thinking more and more about. It's not just school kids is what I'm trying to say. It's also maintaining mobility for older people in a safer fashion. Just a couple of comments of what I prefer. When I looked at those delineations of bike lanes on Maricopa Highway, the ones that involve landscaping, ones that don't, please let's do it with landscaping. Very much feel that way, whether it's the raised beds or not. But I can see the advantage of the raised beds because it's more of a barrier, but again, maintenance and repair is a major issue, of course. Maintenance is a major issue. One comment I would like to make on the Kenyatta, Ojai Avenue intersection. One of the reasons that I have been one of the people pushing for thinking about closing Paseo, is I think it gives us degrees of freedom for safety crossing, safely crossing there for pedestrians and bicycles, that is not there. If you maintain, you know, you're getting ready to cross and well, is that car going to peel off on the Paseo or is it going to stay on the highway? And I think, I think that intersection would be well-served by thinking about that as a degree of freedom in terms of a safe crossing as well as refuge areas for pedestrians when they're getting ready to cross. I think one, two more comments really quickly. One of the most important things about this entire design, and it's been touched on, is that it's not just the pedestrian seeing the cars, getting a better feel and having a less distance to cross, it's also the car seeing the pedestrian. You know, how many times you've been coming down Ojai Avenue into town and people are kind of hanging around, not sure, are they getting ready to cross or not getting ready to cross? And then sometimes they're like, boom, they're crossing without really letting cars knowing they're not just hanging around on the sidewalk, they're crossing. Whereas if they're in that area or in the curb out, then you know that's a signal that, you know, you need to be watching for those people, they're getting ready to cross. So I think all of this is important to do and it's just a matter of refining the design to make it work.
Okay. So under deliberation, let's kind of keep it amongst ourselves and to staff. Anything more from down at this end? I don't want to...
Oh, no, go ahead, let Susa.
I just wanted to, a couple of, ten, a couple of many things. You made the point about the backpacks being so heavy because I saw those poor kids like meals, you know, with their books. That's where the bikes are so great because you put all those heavy stuff in your bike basket. You can even just walk your bike, you know, that's what I do half the time. I walk half the town, but I got all of my groceries in the pack. So, you know, that's one benefit. But I just want to point out, that stretch of the highway, and I think Renee Roth brought that up, there are hundreds of people living within like a fourth of a mile, half a mile of a major shopping center. And all those people are driving. If we do this, those people can, many of those people will walk and bicycle and we're going to be developing that senior housing, you know? Seniors love, they have the time, they love to ride it as, where it's safe. They're, you know, so rather than having traffic impact, more car traffic from this, from the new developments, we can actually reduce the impact of the traffic if we go forward with this.
I have a question of the Public Works Director. This idea of cutting in a driveway apron near the athletic field in order to have the traffic coming safely from Miners Oaks, seems, I was going to say brilliant, but seems also in a way, an obvious solution for a quick solution. I was wondering, is there a reason that if the school district's in agreement with that, that hasn't gone forward or can't go forward more quickly to demonstrate to the community that it actually would work and reduce the congestion at those two times a day where we have the drop off?
We could absolutely, if council supports that, pursue it. It would take some design effort and that's why we're really hoping to move quickly with all this is because to get a permit from Caltrans within six months to a year is pretty remarkable.
Can you get the permit or apply for the permit now while the rest is going on even if we don't get to building it for a while?
Yes.
Yeah, that seems like that would...
The only thing I would say on that is that it's still two lanes right now. So the cutout isn't quite indicative of what it would be like with one lane plus a cutout.
That's true, but it would solve a problem even if we never had the grant. We would, we would be helping improve things.
Still not a bad idea either.
Okay, let me make just a couple of comments.
And I'm sorry, just to follow up on that, the permitting is one thing, you know, we can probably do that all for the range of 5,000, but the actual asphalt curb cut and so on, ballpark, 50 grand. And I'm sure the school...
We like to make it part of the project if we can...
If we can fold it in the project or if they happen to be, you know, sitting on too much bond money... If we can fold it in the project, or if they happen to be, you know, sitting on too much bond money, just like I guess we're sitting on too much with our project.
Okay, well, that's a good reason to pace ourselves. Okay, at the last, at the, at the public meeting that we had over at Sarrazati Park, my concern at that point was, was this question of financing, you know, what's the time value of dollars and inflation? Because this thing's been going on since when? You know, a couple, three years now? And it'll be a couple more years before we are in the market to buy the materials and the labor. But I think you've, you've addressed that in your report where you say that there will be periodic engineering estimates, and then they can efficiency engineer the project down to live within the budget we have. I just didn't wanna see us buy into something, get it half-built, and then not be able to complete it without coming back to the City General Fund, which where the money's not there, so. Okay, so that, that question got answered. My, my next question or concern was this whole, a lot of the questions that were raised about, you know, emergency parking, and what do we do for evacuation and all that? And then we had the Paradise, or the Camp Fire, that, and the tragedies that happened up there. But having talked with Bob Daddy and people in the insurance business who have a very keen interest in all this, and talking to the Public Works Department, that, my question got answered on that. That we, we are going to still in effect be able to open up the bike lane. We'll be wide enough to take emergency vehicles so that we're not, you know, bringing ourselves down where people trying to get out of the valley are having to compete for the only way, you know, going north with the emergency equipment, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
So those two things got answered. My, my, my third big point that I was worried about, and I think it sounds like we have, is in the downtown area, it seems to me irresponsible of us to be having a, a great plan like this without also going back to the parking issue. And a parking authority that's been proposed for as long as you've been proposing bicycles, or longer, in 1974, we talked about it, and we still have not done that in a way. And we've actually kinda gone backward as our town has been prospering with new businesses opening up with higher demand for... Hopefully, they'll be riding bicycles, but they'll have to get here in a car. I don't think very many of our visitors are even gonna be coming completely on a bicycle. Although, we do have them.
But we have parked, parked once. Parked once.
So it just seems to me that as part of the design and the contemplation of this, that the, the way in which we have bicycles go through the center of the city still, we, we should have, we should be replacing any parking that's being removed, and actually should be enhancing, not because we want to encourage cars, but because as a practical matter, we're gonna choke ourselves off, and it'll be less safe if we don't get them off of, of the highways. Anyway, those are the, the three things that I was most concerned with, and it sounds like your plans up to this point allow that latitude in the design phase to take that into consideration. And then what Mr. Polito raised about his building, it does seem that some concern should be given for the architectural, you know, 'cause I actually think when we come down the, what up there by the Jacobs and Jacobs Building, and you look out to the Topo Topo Mountains and look down into the city, what's the, the Clough Park and the Polito Building are what you see? And that's, that's kinda nice to keep that if we can, even though I love trees too. But maybe we can have both, so. Anyway, those are my remarks. Ryan?
Greg, first of all, thank you. This report clarified a lot of questions we had walking into this. And in great Ojai style, we have received a lot of commentary as council members about the negative aspects of this project. And I think 100% of the people who showed up were supportive of it. We heard nothing but negativity, believe, up and leading up to this point for the most part. So I'm really glad, and all of the issues that I have specifically heard were addressed. And Greg, I appreciate that, and the ones we brought up last time. So I think this is very complete, I think everybody's a good idea. And ultimately, what we're looking at is a project that's paid for, may end up costing us a little bit of money, but at this point it's paid for. It's gonna make Ojai prettier, it's gonna make Ojai safer, it's gonna make Ojai look better a number of different ways. Have better trees, have better foliage, have better landscaping. It's kind of hard to not argue this is a no-brainer. This is a very good idea, and I'm glad we got the grant money. Dealing with the aesthetic part of it is the only catch at this point. I think engineering-wise, we're pretty set. I think we're in a good spot. So those few things, and I, I kinda mirror the same issues, you know? I actually, I kinda default that I prefer the trees, even, even in the arcade. But I, I don't wanna, you know, but I'm not a merchant in the arcade, and I don't want to interfere with their businesses. Mr. Polito, I, I know how much work he did putting that building together. When the planning commission was reviewing it a long time ago, there was a lot of separate individual steps. I think we should take into account the work he put in so that we don't, and the cost he had when he built it, so that we don't just overrun that with trees down the middle. But I would have my default position of being, unless there's a legitimate concern like those, I think we should try, if it's within the budget, to get as many trees into this thing as possible. And I, I, I think there's a, you know, that building as well already has a couple of trees in front of it on the left side if you're coming into Ojai. The balance on the right side of Ojai Avenue in front of those, which like, because there's a parking lot in front of West Ridge, I think that is a real positive aspect. But I think at some point, we need to make sure we're understanding that the images we've seen and the renderings aren't exactly what it's actually gonna look like. We have different types of trees, they're gonna come in as young trees. You know, there's a, I don't know, 15, 20 years before, they're probably fully matured, would be my guess. So we, we may have, you know, I don't, we don't wanna sell people in one image that it's gonna be done and look like. It's gonna be a little while before it kinda looks like that. But I wanna make sure that what I'm looking at is exactly some, a little bit closer to what we're actually gonna see. So my, my last question is, you know, can we make sure we get to see that and the public can see that? And then when? Is it tonight, or when? I mean, when is the last day that we are reviewing the design for this? I mean, I'm still not sure. And, and I wanna know that everybody knows that at that meeting is the last time we're really taking input and finalizing what we're going forward with.
Should I address that now, or did you? And I think that was the goal under recommendations. You received a staff report and had a strong discussion on all these items, and there is those outstanding directions that would help us give direction to the consultant. It seems like there's general consensus, like you say, and the lane reduction is obviously the more controversial one. The other ones are much less so, and they're much less critical of the project. And so if we can get direction, the RFP is clear, we get clear proposals. There still is room to move, though. We still have almost two months before we award the agreement. So if you wanted to, I'm not promoting it, but, and I'm not sure how healthy it'll be, because the staff, the primary thing, the lane reduction, to a reminder, without beating it, is El Roblar to the church. That's separated bike lane, and how you separate it, whether it's trees or other objects. I would recommend that we stick with the proposal. And really, we've only, we've got this weak answer from Caltrans. I think it's a 50-50. So if we pursue them aggressively upfront and try to nail it down at their, even though their, their guidance says it's possible, but there's not good examples of it. And if they push back and say it's not gonna happen, we'll pull back and we'll come back and say, hey, trees are not working. We've estimated costs for planters or in-ground landscaping, other options, and we're proposing that as the option. So we could start with the highest safety measure, but I think people agree with, council agrees with, if that's what you do agree to. So that's the more contentious one. So I think going down to item, the other items on the list, the El Paseo Drive Road Intersection, about whether it's closed off or not, same thing, these consultants are experts at it. They could talk, they could propose what they, the pros and cons of each design. And they could discuss with Caltrans also, and bring that back at the same time as a preliminary push with Caltrans. So there's a couple of bigger ones. Then I guess you get down to trees in the, in the median. That one is, I, I think there's been a lot of discussion, the trees on both sides, the tree lined instead of centered. It really is not even important much of a way to the design, but if it's a preference of council, I guess the, the primary developer in that area has proposed to it. And the same thing with the trees down at the arcade, I mean, there's some of the old pictures that had it. You know, you could do two trees, one on each side of the crossing in the center of the arcade, up to a few more. But it does impact parking to a small amount. Every tree is roughly a parking space. Could be less. I mean, a tree, a typical parking space is 20, and it would only be 10 for a tree. So it might not add up, it might take two to equal a parking space. But, but there's also not important to this whole project. It's really, was brought up by some people as a historical character of the old arcade, and it might be attractive down there. But there was some pushback.
Am I, am I correct changing the subject just slightly, or that both the public safety agencies, both police and fire, are signed off on this as not having concern that they will not be able to function properly? Okay, good.
Police, fire, CHP, and ambulance, I should say, all four, yep.
And then lastly, the, the section between the Y and Pyri. You have, the, the staff recommendation, right, is I believe just for painted separation of that, of that lane, is that correct? What, what was, because it didn't, it didn't seem received well, and aesthetically, it didn't look real great in the picture with just the paint. So what was the rationale for saying, hey, you know, even though we wanna do planters or trees and, and much more kinda robust landscaping, why the paint in that area? And, and what's the ramifications if we wanna go to planters or something?
If you, if you continued that separated bike lane, sometimes called bike, a bike, a class four bike lane. But if you did that, and you put trees there, it can be done, it's less common. It can confuse people pulling out of a driveway.
What about landscaping? Not trees, but landscaping?
You could still do the approach that's being proposed by staff.
And, and ground are planters.
Yeah, you still have tree pockets in the parking lanes periodically.
Now, what's the concern if there's a separation? Is that somebody would just pull into that lane thinking it's a drivable lane? Or you said what, why, or you said they don't usually do trees?
If you can imagine pulling out of a driveway, you've gotta look at the, this bikeway, and you're looking at the bikeway, and then you pull out and you stop at the parking lane. And now you're kinda in the way of the bike lane, you're waiting, and maybe there's some traffic, you can wait for it. So you might feel nervous, you're, you're stopped in a bike lane, and you've gotta get out of there quick. So it's done, but it's less common. It's a little more confusing for people leaving a driveway.
This is because that section is the one that has the driveways, like out of the bonds market.
Right, from church all the way back has driveways. So I mean, it is safer. If I was out with my kids, I'd rather be in that separated bike lane.
Right, exactly.
So Mayor, you just answered the million-dollar question. It's just not, it's just not safe how you're proposing it, but that's okay. I got other questions. I have other things. We're supposed to set the priorities on this. That's why I kept asking, Greg, who's setting them? So there's three areas here. There's Area 1, required one priority, 2, priority, 3, priority. I'd like to see us look at this and actually look at, out of those three areas, what do we actually want out of each one of those? Like, for instance, for me, I think the downtown corridor is more important than Maricopa Highway. So I would rather see as much money and as much funding put into making the downtown corridor safer for people to cross streets, safer for bicycle riders if we need, if, if that's part of this consideration. So that's what I'm trying to say here, is we need to do that. The other thing we haven't done is we haven't talked about the studies we've asked for. Where are we on that? Are we gonna get them? Are we going to see visibly, visibly how these, how Maricopa might be changed? Or are we just all gonna jump to a conclusion that we're gonna do it and not wait to visually see it? So we did have that on the last council session. When is that gonna be brought back to us? And when can we see that before we make a decision?
I'm sorry, can you clarify what, what was that?
You were supposed to seek two grants.
Oh, the demonstrations.
Yeah, and, and, and I, and I, I probably disagree on the fact that you wanted to use grant funding versus using our city services and actually getting some type of Caltrans approval, and that we could do it for longer than three days, or four days, or five days. I think something that's gonna impact the community as much as this is, needs to be sold to the community properly, so. And then the other thing I get back to is...
Before you leave now, Ryan, let's be sure we have clarity. What, did you understand that, Greg?
Yes, and as a reminder, that's addressed in the report. So on page 3-4, there's two grants we're applying for. We've already applied for the one, that's the long-term grant.
Just addressed with no timeline.
Well, I thought we actually said in here, we said as, it's a quick build, and we said that it's, it will occur roughly May through July of 2020. Additionally, staff are working on a separate grant, which was a kit of parts, and that would be, occur sometime in June through September of this year.
Okay, so again, my, I'm just gonna go back to my concern. If those are gonna come in May, and we're putting together a design proposal that we're paying for, and we haven't really seen, is that what we wanna do? Are we putting the course, the cart before the horse?
Those were the two options where they're paid for through grant money. The other option was the one I presented December, which is about 65,000, I believe, which was a proposal we had.
Or the other option is talking to the District 7 Supervisor and his safety engineer, and see what we could coordinate with them. And by the way, I did talk to the district supervisor of Area 7 last Friday at VCTC. He hadn't even heard of this plan. So I'm not sure, because he's the new coordinator, or the new district supervisor, if this has even been brought forward to him. So I think that's something we might wanna educate him on.
He might District 7's Ventura, all the way to Orange County, LA, and everything.
I think he is new.
He's District 7.
Isn't he new?
He is new.
Yeah, yeah, they're all one new.
But, but again, those are just, those to me are little gray areas. I think more important is, as a council, that we have a Priority 1, a Priority 2, and a Priority 3. And my preferences would be to take care of everything downtown first. That, that means all of the walkways, and how we're gonna address walkways. And again, that's, that's where I'd like to start. And if we end up going to Maricopa Highway, I prioritize those needs. And I think those needs would be crosswalks again. So that if, all the concerns I heard tonight was the ability to get across the street. I think getting across the street with proper lighting and proper signaling, proper painting of these crosswalks, I think is as important as shutting lanes down and creating, and bicycle lanes. So I'm just trying to say here, I think that's how we should address this. If you guys choose not to, that's fine.
Okay, let me, let me pick up on that and ask a question. As I read that, the very highest priority is to put the crosswalks in and for the, all three sections, is that correct? Or did I misread it?
I would say the highest priority in this grant is the bike lanes and the pedestrian crosswalks combined. It was combined bike and pedestrian improvements, improving safety for those two areas.
And so if a cost estimate came in and said you can do all your pedestrian, would that be the first thing we'd do?
Well, it really is both, the priority is both. I know, if you had to one or the other...
If you don't have all the money and trying...
I think that, I think it would, they'd go back to traffic accident data, and I think that'd be more about pedestrian accidents than bike accidents.
So that would, that would be sort of the answer to the question. Prior, is it, just a minute, let me please finish the question. If the, if where the pedestrian thing was put in first, can that be phased in so that you could have, you know, we don't have, you know, kinda like fast-track construction? You'd put in the crosswalks, which would provide safety up front, and then how much additional work would it be to modify everything else around that?
The intention is we're working with Caltrans because they're, they're phasing their overlay directly behind our project. So the intention is to do the flat work just before Caltrans does the overlay. So they can, we can finish curb extensions, any concrete work, any tree work, whatever we might have. We finish that all, then they come in and do the overlay, it's fresh pavement, they painted everything in.
So just to follow up on my question regarding the priorities, okay? When we put this out to bid, it's listed as this is the priority 1, 2, and 3. And I think that we have, as a council, we have a responsibility to organize this in a manner that serves the community interest. And I think the downtown corridor is more important than Maricopa Highway. So I would probably start with Priority 3 and Priority 2 as being my Priority 1 and 2, and Maricopa being my 3. So that's how I would address it. Now, that's, and that's how I look at it.
Well, I, I, I see it, as you probably know, completely different. I think the number one priority is to give Greg Grant direction for that lane reduction. That is the greatest, the single greatest danger as far as pedestrians go. And it's a waste of money to, I mean, I don't, maybe I misunderstood, but to put in crossings across four lanes, and then later on, that doesn't make sense to me. I think...
Well, they've already answered that question, but I was only asking if it could be done that way. But it doesn't, if you're gonna do the overlay coordination and all the rest of it, you don't wanna keep ripping up or putting off the pavement, so.
So again, to me, the question is...
We can't make, we cannot make that high, section of highway safe with four lanes. It is simply not possible unless you...
And I'm not disagreeing that with you on that. What I'm saying is, what's the priority for the community? And I'm saying the downtown corridor is more important. That's what I'm saying. So I'm not disagreeing that Maricopa needs to be addressed. I'm saying what's the priority of it? And I don't believe it's 1, I believe it's 3.
Bill's been waiting here, and I wanna reward that, 'cause he did wait. Go.
I don't think we should be stuck into just how these three priorities are listed, number one. Number two, I'm gonna disagree with my colleague, Councilman Haney, on this. Number two, I'm going to disagree with my colleague, Councilman Haney, on this. I believe that the lane reduction is traffic calming and safety by inherent endemic design, which is always more cost effective than trying to do it in any other way. And so I, I just think that it, we're not just, I just think that the, this council asserting that it is behind going to the, the lane reduction, albeit maybe with some design tweaks, it hits so many positives in terms of bike safety, pedestrian safety, inherent traffic calming, there is nothing like a two-lane road to calm people down driving-wise, and the connection to Miners Oaks and the Meadows. It just makes sense promoting safe, you know, alternative methods of getting to school, promoting multimodal access to the shopping area. So I just disagree with the idea that that's not a priority. I think that is absolutely a priority. And I, and then in terms of downtown, I believe that the Kenyatta intersection is the most dangerous to be addressed as a priority and by this type of grant. There are other mitigations we can do in the, in the downtown area. Not that it isn't a priority, but I think that we ought to look at what we feel is the most important, not necessarily, we have the required priority by provisions of the grant, as I understand it. But second, number two and three, maybe we need to look at, all of us take a look at how to maybe reorder that, but nevertheless, understanding that the, what we consider to be the priorities, maybe within those two groupings, but not be bound by the groupings. So what I'm prepared to do is to go ahead and, and, and when, you know, when everybody's had a chance to deliberate on this, and I, I really feel like I'm going to, I want to get behind a motion to assert the priority of the lane reduction as an inherent part of this, this whole project.
Greg, what, how important are these priorities? I mean, you know, how, are we spending too much time making sure that we have the priorities in the right order? Are these going to make a difference in funding? You know, we're talking about them, and they might mean something to us theoretically, but the reality is it matters with the grant, and how the grant treats them, and, and frankly, how Greg Grant treats them. So with that play on words, please give me some information.
I would, I would basically agree that the way the priorities are laid out are what the interpretation in talking with Caltrans staff, who are the ones we have to work with on this grant, and it, and how, the, the grant is primarily focused on improving the safety for biking and pedestrian, and promoting biking safety. So the, the, the way that the grant was applied for lays it out as shown here. I think there's certain things in our second priority which were added and make a lot of sense, you know, that Ojai Avenue at El Paso Seo, that crazy corner. We didn't have it in the base, but if we can afford it, it'd be great to do it, but it's a little bit expensive to do it, not too bad. Even the gateway, that center median, is not that expensive. When, when you're doing a lot of flat work, these are fairly inexpensive. But the basic, if you look at the first priorities, it's pretty straight up. It's really just, you know, high, high, high visibility pedestrian crosswalks on Maricopa and Ojai. So, and then secondly, bike lanes on Maricopa and Ojai, those two. And finally, the sidewalk and tree infill, because those are big pluses for, you know, promoting walking as well. So those are the ones that really outlined in the grant, those were ever since, if you look back to the grant application, it was authorized by, by council back originally, that's what it was, and these kind of got added.
And we're in the design phase, right? We're in the design phase, so designing all three segments doesn't say we have to necessarily build it in that same order, or build it all at once, because we may not be able to afford it all.
That's the big advantage of that phasing and percent complete, you do a concept, thirty-five percent.
Right, and they'll keep giving us a budget back, saying what they think it's going to cost.
No, he misunderstood, he misunderstood you. What, I believe what the mayor is saying is, in the process, you're going to have all three priorities designed.
Yes.
And as soon as they're designed, then we'll be, you should be able to bring it back to council with values placed on each of these priorities, and then we in turn, at that point, can pick and choose again. Is that what I'm hearing?
Right, I, I sort of accept that they, they'll do a rough thirty-five, it's not like a final detail. They do a rough, like we already have, and we've already got this estimate that says it'll make it roughly. Now they do a more detailed design, we might find issues with some utilities or something, Caltrans demands it's more expensive than we assumed originally. So at thirty-five, still making it or not, we're, we're over, we need to knock out some stuff. And that's when, we think we're still pretty locked in that first priority, just bike lanes and improved cross, crossings. And then we look at the second and third priority and come back to council and say, hey, we got to knock this stuff back possibly, because we're still tight on budget. So we'll know that at thirty-five, you're going to get a, a big cut then, and we'll have a cut at sixty-five and eighty-five, so you have three cuts.
And just to make clear, you mean percentage of project completion?
Yes.
No, but you're talking about completed. We're talking about beforehand. This has to be designed.
No, this is designed, thirty-five percent design work.
And then we'll know at thirty-five percent how much can get completed?
Yes. And then we'll review it again, and we'll have an opportunity to- Review it again at sixty-five.
You can't move them completely out of each priority necessarily, but we have some flexibility, once we get in there for cost adjustments.
We still have quite a negotiation with Caltrans, even on the striping plan and some crosswalks. You know, they were supposed to improve some crosswalks as well, and, but they, they blew, they lost their ADA improvement budget, so they are not doing what they expected, what they were originally going to do. So they're supposed to cost share in some of this, that was going to help us a lot, we're not quite sure about that still.
I'm going to go ahead and, and-
I don't think we're ready, Bill. I, I just still have some concerns about this. I'm just lost on how we as a council can't make a decision based on the priorities that are given to us, what we consider to be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine. So maybe I'm lost on that, but I have a big problem with that. I think the downtown corridor is more important than that. Obviously, Bill, you and I disagree, probably Susan and I disagree. That's okay, we can disagree.
Downtown is included, though, right?
But I don't think it's a priority. I, if I'm giving someone, you know, because I do designs and I'm in that world, I'm going to give them what I want my priority to be. I want this design first, I want this second, and I want this third. I'm not going to say, start with number three, and I may choose number one. I want to know where I'm spending my money. If we've got thirty thousand dollars of limited funding to do a design for all of these areas, I think it behooves us to choose what our priority is. If I'm wrong, say so.
I'm in agreement with the priorities as, as stated, because that works for getting the grant money, is my understanding. I'm fine.
I think you've got flexibility on second and third priorities, though. Number one is required.
Wait, let's, let's be clear on this, too. The grant money, okay, is not specific to Maricopa Highway. The grant money is specific to Maricopa and the thirty-three Caltrans adjoining areas. So it's not one is greater than the other, or we can't choose which one is a, a higher priority to us. That funding, it funds both areas.
My understanding was that it was a total project with three zones, so to speak. The Maricopa, in, from the Y to town, and then out to the east end. So all of it was in there, and all of it was intended to be funded, assuming the money will go that far by the time we get to it, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the idea of which one we do first, Randy, I don't think is at the design phase. I think we, we'll know what the cost for all this is, and then I don't know that they're going to be building it necessarily in that same order yet.
Oh, that, that, no, it doesn't matter, we probably have a contractor. But I think Councilman Haney is saying some of the second and third priorities are higher priority to him, and I, I was even wondering, I mean, those are not required, but hopeful in the grant monies we have allocated. But, so, I don't know if there's any one of those in particular, Councilman Haney, that, you know, you're saying that should be moved up, that you feel like-
I, I think personally, Greg, I'll, I'll be real honest, maybe I'm confused with the terminology. I'm, I'm being honest with that. When you say required, I'm lost on that word. These are either going to be funded, or they're not going to be funded. When you say required, I get lost in that, I don't know what you mean.
Okay, if I can give it a shot, when we applied for the grant, we said, the city of Ojai would like to do the three bullets shown under the required. We would like to do those three, we estimate it'll cost two point five million dollars, and we're requesting a grant to do those three. And they said, all right, you got it. And so-
That in effect is their, their, the agreement between us and the funders-
Right.
That we're going to do those things. Then we said, well, what if we can do more than that? And that's how we got into these other-
In the process of all this outreach, all these other issues came up that are obviously good, important ideas for various reasons, aesthetics and safety. And so they're listed there, and their priority staff felt would be important.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, I, no, I sincerely mean that, because I'm lost on that word. I'm thinking that these are all, have all been addressed and all been presented to this funding source, and that therefore it's up to us to recognize what we feel should go forward first. What I just heard is, no, the required, what has, has to be done. I just heard that. This is all secondary now.
Yes.
So it's kind of like we put this teaser out to the community, and now they're all going to get their panties in a bunch. You know, what do I, how do we go back now and say, oh, by the way, that was just a wishlist? This is what we are going to do. I personally felt that we should have probably addressed this as this is what it is, this is what we're going to spend the money on. And if that was part of the requirement, why did we even think that we could get the wishlist even put on the, put on it?
I think because we might. Fair enough. I mean, we, we are going to do anything, can fit it in there, but whether or not it was clear enough, I think when we reached out to the community, everybody wanted everything. And we, and we said, everybody wrote it down on all the strip maps, they want everything, and it's all a great idea, and we said, listen, we have to do this, reminder, we would like to do this, we really agree that it's dangerous at El Paso Seo, and we really think that's a hot one to try to fix it, and make that a whole intersection safer. And some of these other ones are relatively smaller money. But adding additional crosswalks, step it up a little bit more under that third priority. It is ideal to have a crosswalk on both sides of intersections, but we don't have necessarily that heavy pedestrian traffic, but it improves safety, but it's more expensive.
Okay, but we will be able to get at least preliminary design for all of it, in order to get a cost estimate, to see, you know, where's the rest of the money going to come from if we don't-
And then try to negotiate with Caltrans, to have them pay for some of it.
And Greg, at this point, you, you are, what's ninety-nine point nine percent confident we're going to be able to complete the three bullet points under the required first priority with our two and a half million dollars?
That's a little high, but I think-
There's a high, high likelihood that we're going to be able to. It's all the extra stuff is really the question, and these other priorities of whether we have money that's going to go there.
As the mayor's highlighted, the years are ticking by and expense costs-
Yeah, then, without inflation, we'd be able to-
Yeah, yeah, inflation and cost of contractor work's going up.
Okay, Bill.
Going back to the description of the agenda item, I'm going to offer a motion to try to make progress. Because if you go back to, the agenda item is to, for priorities and design options. And number two is provide direction to staff on the following design options. So I'm going to offer a motion that we proceed with the Maricopa Highway Lane Reduction Bike Lane Design in terms of choices with a combination of option one or two for the class lane, bike line, lanes, as is compatible with the sanitary district's needs. And what that motion would do is to say that we are going to stay committed to the lane reduction strategy on the Maricopa Highway, but we're going to use landscaping to provide the delineation, and not the other means presented, as the direction from council. That's my, that's not the end of motions, it's just the first one.
Are, are you stopping there, are you going to go through all of them first?
No, I'm going to stop with just one, and see how that goes.
The, the one other aspect I'd add is, I think even in those, even in design one or two, or option one or two-
Combination.
Yeah, well, we don't know, we still have, I mean, we want to push that forward, but we still have an issue with Caltrans. But, but you're suggesting that we go with whatever we believe is the most aggressive option for what we want, inform them of that, and then if, if that's not going to work, we'll find out at a later date.
Well, they're asking for direction for what we want.
Well, kind of, I mean, he asked, he said, hey, if we can do, can we do this? And they said, eh, maybe.
Well, there may be an issue with trees, but not with landscaping.
Yeah, I'm with you there, yeah.
And so my option says, we're going to use a combination of one and two compatible with sanitary district needs in a, which is the landscaping option, not limited to any particular kind of landscaping.
Okay. I, I would suggest trees if available. That's the only difference of opinion I have, is I would say trees if available per Caltrans, landscaping in some other form.
Compatible with sanitary district needs.
Compatible, no, not available.
That's my motion as a first design direction motion, to try to move forward with some decision-making tonight.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll, I'll second that motion, I just want one point of clarification. If Caltrans allows the trees, and we don't have the funding, or there's, the issue is funding, can we include in the motion that we're going to work with Ojai Trees and the community to get, get the funding elsewhere? Or do, does that need to be in the motion?
No, I don't think so.
Or just understood, just understood.
It's understood and long-
Those are issues that probably during budget deliberations in the spring, yeah.
All right.
I just, I just want to see if there's a majority sense that we do want to proceed with that design direction.
Okay, I, I, I have a question of the Public Works Director. This concept that was suggested, and you applied for a grant, for what, a two to three month demonstration?
Right.
Right? How does that fit in with all of this? That's, if we're going to demonstrate it, that is, part of that is to educate, but also part of it is to demonstrate what it is we're going about. What if we put it out there, you know, I, I would hope that it would all work, but it's not working like we thought. Now where are we, do we back up on the design phase?
The timing's unfortunate, they first indicated it would be much sooner than that, and they were actually working out their schedule themselves during the grant process. So it's not, it's not ideal, May through July. I think the, they're saying, and they're in a positive vein, that, that these long-term demonstrations are generally very positive. If they're well-designed, it, the community is at rest, and it's kind of a great way to make them happen. But ideally, it would be sooner.
And you're saying they think they have confidence, they think this is a way to sell the thing, as opposed to just-
Yes, right, right, that, you know, you get the design done, you do it right, and then you demonstrate it, everybody loves it, and everybody's good.
My motion is not exclusive to that.
And hopefully nobody crashes into it, right? That'd be, that'd be nice.
My motion would include that possibility, yes.
But yeah, but what, what happens, you do have that chance, right? And it says, you know, you, you do this thing, and it doesn't, and the community does push back, and council decides against it. Well, at that point, it's always better to be ready, and you pull back, and you would, we'd have to think quick, I guess. We'd have to basically say, we're deleting that portion of the design, and we're applying to AT, you know, the CTC group. We could do a parallel, you know, backout design, which is a four lane with a buffered bike lane tied to the shoulder, the, the, you know, the lowest quality design we have there. We could have that preferred design in parallel with that one. And it's relatively inexpensive, it's straight striping, and it's more standardized.
Okay, Bill, you say that this is implicit in your motion?
Absolutely, I mean, I'm just, it's a, it's an attempt to start to go down the list here in terms of design preferences.
Sort of inherently endemic to the designer, whatever that was earlier, I know.
I, I just want to recommend, you know, if the, if there are members of the public that are hesitant about the lane reduction, there is a vast amount of information about that. You can Google road diet case studies, I did send a link from the, that has, has, have all these case studies, and what the towns experience is. We are, this has been going, this, we're not the first town to do this. I believe this started in the early two thousand, it started-
Yeah, but there are some mixed opinions as to the success of it, depending on where it's applied, so.
There are mixed opinions, but on the whole, I think it's, I, I save a confidence, it's proven to be very effective, especially in school zones. Let's not forget that.
Yeah. Okay, is there any further comment, or should we?
No, Bill, can I, can Randy?
Can Bill please repeat his motion? Yeah, good luck with that, Bill.
Yeah, right.
My, my motion is to, in, respond to two A, provide direction to staff on the following design options. Maricopa Highway Lane Reduction Bike Lane Design. And my motion is to provide direction from council that we proceed with a, a direction for a lane reduction design with class four bike lanes, inclusive of two lane, bike lane, at least one, compatible with Ojai Valley Sanitation District's repair and maintenance needs, using a combination of option one and option two means of delineation for the class four bike lanes.
Okay, I'll second.
And that was for Church to El Robar, right?
I'm just reading your option one and option two here.
And that includes the-
Class four bike lanes with trees, and class four bike lanes with planters, and parking lane buffer.
Right, and that includes the, what Greg said he was going to do simultaneously with a backup plan, in case Caltrans does not go with one?
Yeah, well, that's why I said combination one or two.
So that'll be one or two, or was that one and seven? What was the simplest?
I thought it was one and two is the primary.
One and two.
The backup is seven if- The backup is seven if the demo hits the.
That's not my, my motion, no. My motion does not include seven.
When you say combination.
Option seven is no lane reductions, that is not my motion.
Okay, it's not your motion, let's see if somebody wanted a minute.
I have a question, what, when you say combination of one and two, you mean one if Caltrans has approval of it and then two if not? Because you did say.
One is, the reason, I'm giving discretion to staff because one is just trees, which may not be possible with both sanitary district and Caltrans needs and.
Okay, I see. I was looking at options rather.
Option one.
Options aren't the same.
Option one or two on page three dash four.
Yeah, I know, but the.
Okay. And the reason for that is to provide the design, the direction that that's the preferred way we want to go using landscaping, whether it's trees or planters, raised or otherwise, as a means of delineation and not the other options. That's my motion.
Could I, could I interject? Thank you. I just want, on page three dash four, I wanted to mention option one was proposed by staff or recommended by staff from church to El Roblar. Option six was recommended from church to the Y.
Now, Greg, Greg, I want to clarify, option six, well, option six in the pictures is different than I think the option six should be. Option six in the actual, you know, where it says option six at the bottom has four lanes. So that's why earlier when I asked you why in the, what you were proposing between church and the Y, I thought was something different because this is a four lane road with a painted buff, painted lined buffer.
It says in option six, as an option, the buffer could have a bollard, planter, raised curb, et cetera.
But it also has four lanes.
And I, I don't, I'm saying, my motion is lane reduction with landscaping used for class four bike lane delineation in, as a general principle. Okay?
Three dash eleven.
Now, Greg, I'm not, I'm not trying, my motion is not meant to, you're saying your recommendations are option one from El Robla to church, option six from church to the Y. I don't see that they're mutually exclusive, okay? You are including the idea of a planter as a possibility even from church to Y.
Planner occurs against the curb though, and that the bike lane shifts out to a buffered bike lane.
All I'm saying is I want to maximize the use of, my motion is to, let's say, I'll amend the motion to say, to maximize the use of landscaping, trees or planters or otherwise as a means of delineation to the bypass with lane reduction. That's my motion.
I'll second it again.
He second accepts it.
You want design direction, that's.
And, but it doesn't choose an option one or other, it just says.
It says what it, it says what it says.
Okay. It does imply lane reduction also, right? Yeah.
The most important person to understand this is the person we're giving the direction to. Are you, are you comfortable that you go, you've got it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was thrown off because it is true, it's a good point that, I don't know what happened to our, unfortunately, our, you're right.
Yeah, the options are listed incorrect. So I want to make sure everybody's on this same page literally and figuratively, that we know we're talking about.
I'm not excluding anything, but I'm saying maximize as a design principle. Lane reduction with use of landscaping for bike lane, class four bike lane delineation.
Okay.
You've said that very well now, Greg.
Except for the class four, because class four is only proposed from church to El Roblar, it's class two.
I, I got that, okay? I'm saying class four, maximize to the extent possible, okay?
Okay, all right, got it.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
The people who do this final design.
So Greg, let me ask this, what, what option did you mean? In option six, that is the concept design from church road to the Y, if it's not this picture of six, it's actually one of these other ones, right, which I think is two?
Five.
Five, okay. So it should be five, not six, that's the, that's the difference.
Okay.
And there.
Scribbed properly there, but it's not.
Right, and inside of five, the diagram we have on five, that's three dash twenty-four. The difference, the only difference for what you, the staff recommendation is and, and really where what Bill's motion is, if I'm correct, is that rather than a painted buffer, it would be a landscaped buffer up to the most landscaping we can do. Trees priority one, planters priority two, correct?
Either in the buffer or else in the parking lane, wherever we maximize it to the extent possible, yes.
Bill, you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, it's my motion.
All right, do we vote?
I believe it's been seconded.
Yes. Multiple times.
And pending Greg understanding what the hell we said.
Got it.
Now, this is all just in the design phase, and if there's not money for it, you aren't going to do it. If Caltrans says, no, you can't do it, and we'll be, but, but, okay.
But the motion is.
We've got to move forward.
The ask is for us to provide design preference correction.
That's right, yeah.
And if it passes, if somebody asks us what the design is, this will be the design until it changes.
This is our aspirational.
It's our aspiration.
Okay, are you good with that, Greg, as far as understanding?
I got it, I just thank you because that's what I was looking for, so we can really go after this immediately. We can even pursue it in the short term.
It looks like the city manager is on the edge of his seat.
I'm waiting for the next moment here, so. I was just, actually, I was just going to, since you, since I have the floor, I was just going to note that we are coming up on 10:30, so I was going to remind you after the vote was when I was going to state that.
Yeah, well, we can continue, the other, we can, okay, is there, are we ready for a vote?
I'm ready for a vote.
Okay, call the roll. Please.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
All right, so that takes care of the Y, should we move to Ojai Avenue now?
Sure.
Okay. Now, my first question is, do we want to suggest, I agree with something you brought up, Bill, I would like to see, now Greg kind of pointed out that it might take a new, but when we're looking at Ojai Avenue.
And Kenyatta.
And Kenyatta, I would like to see a desire, or whatever we need to do to take the next step, to see what the pluses and minuses are of closing that off.
Yes.
It has been a problem since, I mean, it used to be two lanes, it's even more a problem. But that has been a problem and it's really, I, I mean, it's so short to go around there to get in. I just, I would like to see what, what potential proposal and what, anything we haven't thought of on it.
Could we include in that that we keep it open for bicycles and pedestrians?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't.
Is that understood?
Yeah, bike lane out there is another.
Just closing for car, okay, just one.
As a way of providing pedestrian refuge and better, better bicycle crossing.
That's good too, because if you're on a bike or you're walking and you're going to Matilla Hah, or you're trying to, that would go up that way and go up those side roads rather than along Ojai Avenue.
Yeah, it's great, it's great.
We should make, I mean, I like the, I like the idea maybe making that bike.
Okay, we have a motion.
Just a little bollard opening.
Can I have a motion?
Yeah, well, then the, the motion would be to, to fall, well, the, well, no, we're not ready because the, the.
Oh, come on, give it a try.
Well, I, I, I mean, the, the center area, I, the one place I don't agree with trees is in that center median that is proposed on Ojai Avenue. I think that small shrubbery is okay there with trees on the, what would be the right side there.
Tree lined on both sides.
Tree lines on both sides, but the trees already exist in front of the Ron Polito building.
But not on the south.
But not on the other side, okay. So my motion would be to move forward with the design that includes trees on that right side as you're entering Ojai. The median having a, having shrubs instead of taller trees. And then the rest of the, I don't think there are any modifications to the rest of the staff recommendation after that.
And then the, and considering the Paseo Road closure is.
Along with what we stated about the El Paseo Road closure and designing that to be just a bike path rather than a road up that road.
A design alternative, we can do a sketch design with pros and cons, right?
Okay, I'll second that.
Moved and seconded.
The, the only part of that that isn't discussed is the, is trees in front of the arcade.
That could be a third. That's, that's.
You want to do that separately?
That's two D.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
No, two, two C.
Then as the motion says.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
No, it just, it's, what, whatever we do.
No, it was good.
Whatever, no, whatever we do with that entry sends the message that people are entering a pedestrian zone, slow down. So we want to make sure that the design accomplishes that.
Well, I'll say this, there's one part of this that had, and Greg, correcting, wasn't there at least in one of the priorities, an island on Kenyatta when you're walking across, if you're crossing the street? Was it, was it Kenyatta and Ojai Avenue where there was going to be a, like a pedestrian island?
There's the gateway, they were talking about the median that was going to be landscape, so that has.
Be the median that would be narrative.
It's got a bull nose in front of it, creates a refuge.
One thing, Suzie brought this up, you know, that, that framing and highlighting the entrance of Ojai, that median seems like a wonderful location for a small sign that says downtown Ojai, or welcome to downtown Ojai. We'll obviously deal with that later, but it's in the vein of what Suzie brought up, I would suggest.
Yeah, we can try to throw in something real simple.
Yeah.
Without getting too crazy on the design, yeah.
Hey, we'll put another peace sign there.
Okay, good, good. Any further discussion? Okay, will a clerk call the roll?
Mayor Pretem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Just a little drama here, we're almost over, okay, now.
By the way, it wouldn't have mattered if you said no.
Thank you, councillor. I don't count well, yeah.
I'm going to offer a motion for direction on the arcade area. My motion in the arcade area is that we, in the arcade area, and really this is in deference to the unanimous opinion I'm getting from all of the business owners that I've talked to, every single one of them, that we refrain from reducing parking capacity in the arcade area between Signal and Montgomery. And that would mean that we're not going to put trees in front of businesses in the arcade.
At least, at least for now, okay, we have a second to that motion?
No, I have a, I have a clarification.
We have a second?
Need a second for a second.
We don't need a clarification, we don't have a second. Okay, I'll second your motion, go ahead, Randy.
Uh, the, the area where there's the crosswalk in the center of the arcade does have some bowl bouts and we, I know you'd said even if we don't do trees everywhere else, is that a spot that a tree, because it, does it help delineate that there's a crosswalk? If we do one, maybe set of trees on their side or two on each side? Can you explain if we're not doing what's proposed because of the merchants, how would it work doing that limited amount on the crosswalk area?
I appreciate bringing that up because at, for the curb, for the crosswalk, curb extensions will improve the safety of that crosswalk to have in there. So there is, I, I'm, sorry, I don't know the exact configuration, but there might be a minor impact of parking, so.
Well, then I'll amend my motion to say that, that my motion would be not to reduce parking capacity with landscaping unrelated to safety improvements.
And other than the exception of the crosswalk at the center?
I have a question there. So how does the, you know, these bowl bouts, and then we're putting in bike lanes? Do, does that bring the bike closer to traffic or further away?
No effect, because the curb extensions can only go six foot off the curb, so they're within the parking lane. The parking lane's eight foot, so they're two foot inside of it.
So if I'm riding a bike, what's my bike lane supposed to be, six feet, five feet?
Four, four to five.
Four to five?
Minimum.
So if I'm in my bike lane out from the curb out, I'm 10 feet into the street, I'm not impacting, I'm not going to be impacted by traffic?
Yeah, all, all those bike lanes are, you know, parking and then bike lane. So it's always going to be that parking lane, the curb extension is inside of the parking lane, you're driving along it. So it's not, a lot of cities will have the curb extensions come out past the parking lane, but Caltrans doesn't allow that, so it won't be an impact on these.
Our crossings downtown are pretty wide, can the curb extensions be pretty much well handled within the width, existing width of the crossings? Stripe to stripe, pretty close or not?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, I'm getting your drift there.
Our pedestrian crossings are pretty wide downtown.
Yeah, about 10 foot, right?
They're, they're not well marked.
They just re-striped them about a month ago, right? Yeah, just a new term.
We have some additional reflective paint put in there and everything, but I, in other words, can the, the curb outs be handled within that width?
No, no, they have to be on the outside of it.
Outside of that, okay, and how far out?
That's, there's some very interests on that. For instance, as you're coming into town, there's an old bus stop which goes on the whole front side of the pergola and it's red striped for about, what, 30, 40 feet or so in front of it? It helps for a line of sight for a pedestrian and a car, so it helps both ways.
So my motion is, is not to preclude those safety improvements that might involve some parking sacrifice, but I, my motion is intended to not have additional parking loss due to trees unrelated to safety being planted in Ojai Avenue in that section.
We probably can pick up that whatever space is lost by getting rid of some of that red curb for the old bus stop that has been sitting there.
It also, it also shows off the pergola, it's got a few different features.
That is my motion.
Crew to park sometimes.
Greg, the bike, the bike lanes on Ojai Avenue though are not, they're not separated, right? Or there's no picture of anything that shows them separated, it's just the lines on the, it's just painted on the.
Yeah, those weren't so much an issue, so they're in the previous reviews by council, but yeah, it is, yeah, it's not separated. There's not enough room to separate them in any way.
It's just, it's just going to be paint on that side, which is new, but, and, and they're not going to be protected by the bowl bout because the cars will be there, parked there, so they're going to be, it's just going to be essentially like it is on Grand right now?
No, Grand's a chero, so these will actually be from the Y all the way to Gridley except for when it's very tight between the library and Montgomery, which is, that's a chero right in the downtown.
Okay, it'll be wider than.
As soon as you get outside it, there's just enough room, barely, and that's where I think Councilman Haney was getting it. They're not ideal bike lanes, these bike lanes are tight, yeah.
Okay, no problem.
My motion's very limited, just.
I know, I just, this is totally separate question.
All right, can you, I, I don't, I'm not asking that you put this in your motion, because, but let's air this out, okay? There, we, if we add parking on Montgomery down the road, I mean, I would like, I, I mean, what I foresee is this, that we're going to revisit this and that some, you know, there, because this is happening in other cities, they're removing the parking in front of stores, in cities across the world, they're doing that, and putting, moving the parking out of, out of the way and then having the bike lanes. And this is especially ideal in between a park and the most busy part of town. So that should be the vision, may, we may not be able to do it this round, but let's not, the vision should be to make that, that core area completely bicycle, pedestrian and shopper friendly. The shoppers will absolutely love it.
My motion is only limited to the, the particular direction for this particular grant.
Yes, yes, okay.
And we should be motivated to start addressing the whole idea of a parking authority where everybody gets a, you know, benefits assessment and, and we do it right.
Right, but we don't have it now.
Well, right, I mean, I, if, if there was a proposal to expand parking somewhere else, we might consider the trees, but if they're not, if we don't have that proposal, taking out those spots in front of the arcade is bad. Not to mention, it's also their key spots for still going to the post office too, which is always a problem.
So, so just another, just another well thought out, organized way to enhance downtown living. So the question I have with crosswalks, how are you going to improve them? What's your plan for the crosswalks themselves? Are we going to light them all? Are we going to put some type of a pedestrian safety button where they can push something to light something up? Or are we just going to paint sidewalks?
A combination of curb extensions when practical. Again, we're being very careful as you come into town not to have curb extension on the right hand side, so it allows you to still peel off to the side and make the right hand turn when you want. But as you're exiting town, there'll be curb extensions. And so curb extensions, signage that moves to the curb extensions, flashing beacons, and those are the primary factors.
Okay, so I'm just asking you specifically, are we going to put flashing beacons on every walkway or just on the ones that you consider to be important?
They are proposed at all except for the one in the center of the arcade.
And what does it take to, I don't know what the costs are, but you know how some places or towns I've been in, they actually put it in the pavement and while it doesn't.
That's, that's proposed, but it, we have some flexibility on that because of the historical impacts and so on, it wasn't required. We, we've cushioned that in the grant request.
Also, you have to close down lanes to replace the lights.
So. Admittedly, they are much, much more durable now than they were in our, our run we had out there.
This is my observation in 25 years, living down, looking at downtown, is the, the main walkway going into the center of Libby needs to be lit, it's not right now. And then the second most important crosswalk is the one coming across the Chevron Station to the new brewery. Are those both going to be lit, are those both gonna?
We have, we have streetlights right over the top of that one in front of the coffee roasters and also we put one in a few years ago right in front of Jersey Mike's and.
It's pretty dark.
Unfortunately, they're not intense enough, yeah, I agree.
It's pretty dark.
No, it's, they're not safe.
Let's get an AD in there.
Those are the two most used walkways downtown, and they're the least safest. So again, I'm kind of lost, well.
Well, I mean, the flashing beacons, flashing beacons are what should attract people, you know, you know when you see those things going that somebody's activated it.
But Greg, everyone does press the button, they just run out, they really needs to be lit better.
And we, we don't need to wait for this grant to, to get light there, we have to get light there.
We're going to have to go to a new light standard, I guess those acorn lights like you see in front of Chevron along downtown are not sufficient. They don't, I agree, they don't light it up well enough.
I think we should ask the brewery since they got that big.
We're getting a little away from my motion.
Right, okay, so.
Brewery can chip in.
Bill has motion on the floor to proceed, you want to, as Randy would say, could you restate that?
Well, I just wanted a clarification of what you're doing when you're saying, when you're saying. Well, I just wanted a clarification of what you're doing when you're saying, when you're saying sidewalk, or when you're saying crosswalk improvement. So I don't know how you wanna?
We'll include that in our F P though, to improve lighting and see if we can have that as an option in these cost things we have here, there, see what we can do. I, I agree, it's a point that seems to be overlooked on all these improvements people are doing in crosswalks, you know, everybody's focused on flashing beacons and so on, but the light is really key.
All right, my, is, do I need to restate my motion?
No, I think we're.
I think it's pretty clear.
Okay, we're good, okay.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, that gets us brought down to the, to the fourth one? Street landscape, or did that incorporate the last one?
I think we incorporated it.
No, that motion included, we talked about the, looking at the median on Kenyatta, too.
Oh, okay.
Okay, good.
Could, could staff ask for one last direction at the risk of, so the manager having a long discussion with me tomorrow? And that was, it was proposed to add streetside parking from Ventura to Kenyatta on the north side, and there was some opposition from the property owners there.
Yeah, I will make it clear, my motion did not include that, because there's already, so on, on, but which side of the street, on the?
North side.
Is that the museum side?
That would be across the museum, and then across the AT&T to Toledo Development.
In front of Toledo's building, there's already trees.
Right.
So, are we, so would it not, you're not talking about in front of there at all? Because I thought you just said that was.
No, I, I was talking about parallel parking, could still fit parallel parking from there back.
Oh, just the parking, not the addition?
So Plato is opposed, he's expressed that, I don't think the AT&T building cares, there's nobody in there. Museum was actually supportive, and then the mob shop was back and forth.
So we could, we're, we're talking about the sensitive area is from Blanch to Kenyatta?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because not in front of the museum.
And I should say the mob.
Museum doesn't have any parking now either.
Ventura, Ventura to Kenyatta?
Right.
Well, it depends.
Not, not Blanch, Ventura.
Well, it's, Blanch to Kenyatta is the frontage of Ron Toledo's building.
Yes.
And then to Ventura would be the frontage of the museum.
Yes, I know, yeah.
And then the mob, so the mob shop was, they, they, they're initially opposed, and in the end, I'm not sure where they landed up being, but, yeah, the museum, I think, was generally supportive.
And why, why do we need parking there?
The idea was lack of parking downtown, let's add parking.
We're also, yeah, we're also talking about.
If they don't wanna, don't do it.
I mean, I'll tell you, my opinion is on that.
They can park in front of my house, it's a block away.
It also compromises line of sight at the crossings.
There's so much parking.
So I would say no.
I mean, there's so much off-street parking available.
I appreciate that direction, if it's against it, makes it easy for us.
Do we need a vote on it? I, should we vote? Should we vote to say we're not including that as part of the program?
Run a one-minute hiatus.
I think I get to hint over.
I think the mayor pro tem takes over, isn't that how this works?
The mayor, there's still a quorum.
In there, Susa. Declare an emergency, let's get this thing moving forward.
Mr. Grant, do we need a motion?
We have, we have outlawed automobiles, we have outlawed automobiles in the city of Ohio.
I'll take it.
So I, I think a motion would help.
Agreed.
I think a motion would be helpful for staff.
You gotta be careful.
I, I'm gonna provide a motion that we, as design direction, that we do not proceed with parking from, along Ojai Avenue on the north side from Ventura Avenue to Kenyatta.
Oh, thank you, that's my little route.
And I see the chief nodding his head, too.
That can become a part of the subject of the whole parking authority and the parking study.
That's my motion.
A question?
Second it.
Okay, move in a second, further discussion? Okay, call the roll.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
There was a question concerning Bill, your motion earlier on the, to not affect the parking in front of the arcade.
With.
That was, way our discussion, when I assumed that that meant on both sides of the street.
Right.
For the, in that downtown.
With non-safety-related landscaping.
Yeah, with the exception of the area where the crosswalk.
Which is safety-related.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay.
Okay.
Okay, very good, okay, does that conclude this issue?
I think so.
And now it's two.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Thanks for coming, everyone.
For staying.
Okay, let's go to the next section, which is council member reports.
We'll continue everything else.
You can go, do you have a report for the council? You're welcome to, sorry.
This is wonderful. Before you get home before eleven.
Chief Frye, I'll say something, since, I, I've, I got a letter in the mail the other day, that my mail had been stolen, and the post office found it. And they sent me a package of all this mail that apparently had been stolen with a letter that said, "We found your mail at somebody's house, just so you know, here it is," and I, I had heard, you know, I think in the newspaper I read some about it, but do you know anything more about this? And, I mean, obviously, you probably don't know where the rest of my mail is, but I, I don't know if you know, if that's something we need to, is it something that's coming, happening significantly in the city right now?
So, mail theft is very common, so we always encourage people to make sure you're checking your mail a lot daily, if you have something that's going out, that's got anything in it that's of importance, you're probably better off taking it to a post office, because nothing says, "I have mail," like putting a flag up on your mailbox, right, that's gonna get stolen. If there's a check in there, then that can be compromised, they can, you know, it used to be that they only had to bleach the check, but now with computers and software, they can actually replicate that check over and over again, because all they need is your routing number and account number, and they can, and they can do it, if people don't check for I D., your, your account can be compromised significantly. So I would say that if you have your mail at a traditional mailbox, that if you have outgoing mail that's important or sensitive, you take it to the post office, and if you're not gonna be home for any amount of time, have a neighbor collect your mail, or, or put a stop on it, and, and know to check it right when it's delivered. Unfortunately, our identity thieves are still using this as a primary source of income because of the, the ease at which it is to apply for credit in your name, and then use that credit card after it's been delivered at any number of businesses, even if it's just online purchases right after the initial application is made, because nobody's checking I D., so.
Thanks, man.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, I, I'll be, to be hon, they, the mail that came back, the credit card, they didn't use the, they didn't do anything with the credit card offer, which I was kinda surprised, but checking everything now to make sure nothing happens that may stem from that.
And you can put alerts, obviously, on your, the three credit bureaus to also make sure that if somebody's applying for credit in your name, but typically, when they're doing mail theft, they're doing hundreds at a time. And so, you may have just been fortunate, they didn't get to yours yet. A lot of times, we'll do that when we make an arrest, we contact the victims, ideally, we need eleven victims for there to be an enhancement to actually give them some jail time, so.
Oh, wow.
Once we have confirmed eleven victims, we don't spend a whole lot of time going after the other hundred, because we don't get any more time for any more than that.
Do you guys prosecute those yourselves, or does it go to the federal court?
No, we prosecute them locally.
Do you need eleven vic, victims?
For the enhancement, yeah, for any theft. So I did have a report.
Short council member report on the ordinance revision, coming back to councils from the Ad hoc Committee on the Historic Preservation Commission, we have made the presentation to Historic Preservation Commission. I was wondering, there's nothing in the way of bringing back this now to council, I was wondering if, in other words, it's in the hands of staff now when it comes back to council, we've done, gone through all the steps. I don't know when that's happening, I hope it is sooner rather than later, but I'm, I'm not just saying, you know, when you can. I don't see anything else that needs to be done on that, on that ordinance revision proposal.
Right now, it's slated for February twenty-sixth.
Okay, we'll start down here, Randy.
Just real quick, I just wanna reiterate, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but I think we were misled on this A T P process. I still think that the priority should have been downtown and not the one fifty, so I'm just gonna say that. The other part of it is V C T C, nothing, and V cog, some things related to personnel which I can't pass on, so, good.
I think we still have an opportunity on the which part of the project starts first when the estimates and everything comes back, but I, I could, I may be wrong on that, but I believe that that's, there's still a little flexibility.
That's correct.
I don't know how much. Once we got into this grant a couple of years ago, the train started to leave Station Ryan.
Susan and I have been on the subcommittee regarding cannabis, we've met with all the dispensary owners, we have done, we've, we've, there's a significant amount of information that we were not aware of a few weeks ago, I would say is a fair statement, we're going to plan a time to meet with the city manager, debrief him on what we found out, have, have a, he'll, he'll take our advice and put together a recommendation, I think we should be able to do that sometime this week, I, I planned it, I think it'll definitely be before the next council meeting, I wasn't sure, though, if it is scheduled for the next council meeting or not.
Well, no, because we were waiting for the committee work to be done, so we had, it's, doesn't have an assigned spot as of yet.
When we meet with you, I guess, we'll just figure out the scheduling on that.
Can I clarify what you guys are discussing? Was it just?
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing period?
Well, manufacturing, distribution, how it interacts with retail, micro-business licenses, and the possibility of standalone distribution licenses, or standalone manufacturing licenses.
Right. Okay, the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund has their annual meeting on the thirtieth of January, we are now a part of that group. Bill Miley, I asked Bill Miley to attend on my behalf, he's been working on all of these affordable housing things, and anyone on the council would be welcome to attend if they're interested, it'll be held in Camarillo at the Camarillo Library, and I can give you the rest of the detail later if you are interested. I can't attend because I am attending a water, water meeting of the Association of Water Agencies at the very same time slot, not too far away, so I might slip over afterwards. Susa?
Okay, I don't know if this is a report, I did speak, I know this was, we didn't get to it, but I just wanna say, I spoke with some of the commission members, and there was a concern that we are not attending the meetings, you know, the council members, just as we're concerned by their absences, they're equally concerned by our absence, so it cuts both ways, so I just.
We're not required to go to those.
You're right, that's just a pushback, not a very good.
But, but, well, from my perspective, we have a responsibility, if we miss the meeting, we should watch it on, there's no excuse not to watch it, because things do come up. And also, I didn't know this, they said that it used to be that if you couldn't attend, that you find somebody else to attend for you, which I think would be really difficult, but I must say, I was really happy when I watched, what meeting was that, the recreation?
Parking rec.
Parking rec, that you were there to answer the questions, I was so relieved to see you walk up to the podium, because I missed that meeting, so thank you very much.
Okay, so, is that?
That's all, that's all I could figure.
And you've had yours, Mr. City Manager, do you have something for us?
Well, briefly, Anaya, this is an announcement for the council, but more for the community, obviously, we, the city was not successful in our appeal to the Board of Supervisors regarding the Bentley oil matter, the board did approve that three to two, although with a slight provision that they encouraged the city to, and Bentley to work together to see if we could address some of the traffic concerns that had been raised during the appeal hearing, so, but again, that decision did come down last Tuesday, and the board voted three to two to deny our appeal as the council.
Is that the only thing they did, or did they encourage us to talk also about monitoring?
I thought they did.
Yeah, I thought that that was more comprehensive, not that it's binding on anybody.
I'll double check, I actually asked for the, the wording of the motion, and it did not include that, but I remember that being mentioned, so.
Okay.
Not sure if it made the final motion or not, but.
Mayor, mayor along those lines, I would just like to express my support, if you, as the mayor, you have special project authority to direct the city attorney per council protocols, and I would support the city attorney being empowered to communicate with, I believe it's Chapman Brown in San Francisco.
I think the Sea Frog attorneys, that the city is helping Sea Frog fund for the Ventura County General Plan Update, I think that's actually Schuylkill and Weinberger is the name of the firm.
Okay, that firm, I, I, that I, I would like to, for the city attorney to feel free, per your, you know, I would support your, your discretion on that, but I would support if you wanted to authorize it, there be a, a communication back and forth on the issues raised by the decision of the Ventura Board of Supervisors, just an exploratory, as preparation for briefing us in closed session in the future on these issues.
Consider that?
And, I'm happy to make that call, on that question, when would the council like to consider the matter in closed session?
Isn't there, don't we have a, are we anticipating a closed session on something the next meeting, and that's gonna give us a tight window, if I recall something?
Yeah, the issue is that, the exact deadline to file a, a sequoia challenge will depend on when the county takes a procedural step, that we are awaiting when they do that.
Is that, is it ninety days?
Maybe the case that.
Is it ninety days, Matt?
Sequoia deadline is actually thirty days.
Okay, it's not like everything, okay, sorry.
I think if council desires to meet on that, I think our recommendation would be to try to look at Tuesday, February fifth, we could go the, the Tuesday before that, Matt's not available, another member of his fam, of his firm could be here, but if we were to meet on the fifth, then just do a closed session to have that discussion, that would still give us.
Yeah, the fifth would be.
That's, that, we don't have a council meeting scheduled.
So the discussion is the pro and con of appealing?
Well, no, I think, the, the issue would be for us to get briefed to me on the legal, the sequoia issues and general plan issues raised in that hearing.
And who do we appeal to?
We don't appeal anymore.
A court.
Nothing, we go to a court, we wouldn't be appealing to the county.
You've exhausted your.
We haven't made any decision along those lines at all, but I, but I do think we need to be briefed about the, the legal issues involved.
I, if, there's no point in getting briefed unless you're gonna have the stones to fire the bullet, and I don't, that's, so, it's a much bigger question at the same time.
I'm not presupposing anything.
It's a legal term.
Yes.
I'm not presupposing anything at this point, but I do, there are significant issues raised with respect to the, how the county looks at sequoia that are not, I, I think arguably not mainstream in some circles, nor the way that they look at the relationship between administrative discretion and general plan provisions, that are not viewed as mainstream in some circles.
Where are you at, on this, Matt?
As I noted at the hearing the other day, the county's staff's assertion that the Ojai Valley Area Plan can be, five pound per day limit for knocks and rocks can be considered subtracting any admissions from, any equipment permitted by the Air Pollution Control District, is the county staff's position that was accepted by three members of the board, not the other two, and that is a position that was rejected by the Ventura County Superior Court in a decision about a year and a half ago, or a year ago, on another project. My inclination is that the judge got it right, and that decision, county staff got it wrong[1591.71] My inclination is that the judge got it right, and that decision, county staff got it wrong this time. Uh, but of course, the Board of Supervisors disagrees at the moment.
And that's sufficiently analogous that we should have a closed session, talk about it and figure it out?
There's value in the council considering the matter in closed session, yes.
Okay, so then, are we, uh, going to have a closed session?
Do we have to vote on, do we?
No, I just want to get, get a sense of everybody.
Yes, I'm, I'm supportive, but now that I understand, thank you.
Well, we, we should be briefed at least as to what the choices are and, you know, what our standard is, so.
And schedule-wise, that's got to be the 5th, you're saying, Steve?
Well, it doesn't have to be. I've just, I mean, it could be any date between now and the 14th. Obviously, we want to give ourselves enough time, and if you want to do it on a Tuesday, just because that's wrong.
Matt, let me ask you this, and is it a notice of appeal, or is it the full appeal? Is it the full brief that you have to file in that 30-day window, or is it just a notice of appeal to extend some time?
Not an appeal.
It'd be, it's not an appeal. It's, it's initiating a-
It's, yeah.
It's initiating writ of mandate, so it's a petition for writ of mandate, equivalent to a complaint.
Okay, but writing the actual writ of mandate's not going to be that, is it going to be?
No, you have to, it's equivalent to a full complaint. It's, it's a higher standard than mere notice pleading, as you might see in an PI case, meaning that we would need more than two days to put it together.
I know, I know we separated from that commonality, but I, I want to know our timeline.
We can figure a date.
Okay, if, if the 5th works, and there's no objection to meeting on the 5th?
Right.
Uh, do we want to meet early, because it'll be our only topic?
About two weeks?
Yeah.
Six o'clock, or what time, what time's good for?
Whatever, whatever's good for council.
Yeah, we can do anything.
Let's do it in the day.
We could do it in the day if you want.
Well, the other thing, well, we are all here tomorrow, by the way.
24-hour notice for this meeting.
No, that's not-
Yeah, let's do it after the-
Good thinking, good thinking.
Tomorrow night, what are you going to do?
I would, I would like to have our council have some time to fully research the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we could use some more.
Yeah, the 5th is okay with me. The 5th works well for us.
Okay, are we going to do it the 5th during the day or 5th during the evening? If you have a pleasure, I'm happy to get it over with early.
I think it all hinges on Ryan.
What?
Probably hinges on Ryan if he has-
Uh, I, I, the, the, at least the afternoon or evening would be better for me.
Oh, okay.
What, what time would you, what time would you guys like to meet?
Afternoon, evening, I can work with.
I'm flexible.
Is 5 o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine.
Good?
Yeah, I can make that work, yeah.
Five, 5 o'clock on the 5th of February?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can-
Before you gamble, could I make a public comment since? Yeah, I didn't remember before that, was this the sole reason that I came for?
Oh, yeah, come on now.
Well, it'll be, it's continued by default.
So two things, yes, it will be continued, Councilman Wyrick, for the third time. Since this was, this was a continuance from the last time we were going to talk on it.
You're talking about the commissioner?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, well, actually, the, this agenda is worded differently item than it was the first time it was just a report. This includes action possibilities.
True, but again, it, it was a discussion on the commissions.
Yes.
And so that meeting was postponed without comment to, to tonight. Essentially-
We changed the agenda wording to make it an action item and not just a report.
Okay, still talking about the commissioners, and you added an action item in there that didn't have some information.
Yeah, that, yeah.
And Councilman Blatts?
Yeah.
Um, the fact that you don't think it's your responsibility to show up when your name is on our agenda for our commission meetings is disappointing to me. Because when we see the councilmen's, councilperson's names on the agendas, we anticipate they will be there.
And Brian, let's just make it a general comment, not, uh-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm-
Well, then, then, Ryan, just a second. It's not, not personal, just your-
It is, and it's just, you know, when we-
I, I don't necessarily agree with the rule, but that's the, that's the booklet that the city gave.
Okay, Ryan, they were now, this is comment, we don't respond to comment. Go ahead and finish your statement.
I felt pretty personal, so.
I'll talk down.
Don't take it personal.
Guys, guys, I know you love to be here until at least 11, don't you, so we got to keep this dragged out.
No, thank you very much. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. Okay, meeting is adjourned.